Okay, we're recording, please go ahead.
Good evening. It is the open meeting law allowed us to complete. Eleven. Eleven people. Eleven councilors in the room. I'll call up, since we have, given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the February 4th special town council meeting to order at 6:02. I'll call upon each councillor by the name they have indicated they would like to be addressed at that time. Please unmute your mic and say "present." This will indicate that we can hear you and you can hear us. I still got an echo. Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
Councillor Ette is not here yet. Lynn Griesmer is present, Councillor Hanke.
Present.
Bob Hegner.
Present.
Councillor Lord.
Present.
Pam Rooney.
Here.
Councillor Ryan.
Here.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Jennifer Taub.
Here.
Councillor Walker. Not here yet. Okay? There is no chat room for this meeting. I'm sorry.
Just a very small point of order, my microphone is always on, so I'm wondering whether I should just turn it off?
You can turn it off.
Turn it off.
And on.
By unplugging it, I assume.
Oh, no, just give the button.
Turn it off, just push the green button. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, there you go. If you have technical issues, please let Athena and me know. And we'll decide what to do at that time during this evening, there will be no general public comment. I find you with two announcements, one is on Saturday at nine o'clock, February 8th. We have a four towns meeting at the Amherst Regional Middle School Library. And on Monday, February 10th, at 6:30, we have a public forum on appropriations outside the budget, followed by a regular town council meeting. Actually, the forum will be part of the regular town council meeting. We'll just pause for it. Okay? With that, I'm turning it over to Athena, I'm done with my official role tonight, except to adjourn us. Okay?
Thanks Lynn, thanks everyone, I think we're gonna get right into it, so I'm going to share the document that I sent out. Which shows, I, I know this came a little bit late today, but this document shows everything that was ranked high. And when I put these into categories, I put things in high if they, if there were seven or more councillors who ranked them high. I put things into tilt-high when there were most councillors ranked them high, but it was less than seven, so maybe five. And then the other rankings were scattered elsewhere, I'm sorry, on a prioritization. And so on. And we also have, there were no consensus on deleted items. I've included where the priorities were for these items that there was not a consensus, so you can see where the priorities fell. And then we have these measures that were excluded from the prioritization list. So I think we're gonna start with high, I'm gonna not do a lot of talking tonight. So we can start the discussion when folks are start, ready to start talking about these, if you need a moment to look at the comments from the town manager on the right side, and obviously he's here and he can speak to those. So we'll start with high, the floor is open. Just looking for discussion on whether to include, exclude these. We won't look at language yet, we can do that once we get down to a list. Anna, you had your hand up?
You might tell me to wait till we get down to the list, my question was about whether the high indication was on the original or alternative language. And I think, I'm trying to switch between the two documents, I apologize. But if we're gonna get to that later, just tell me, we'll get to that later.
Sure, so I didn't break the original and alternative language items into separate things, so for this one, develop a plan for critical space and programming. There were five councillors who preferred the original and four who preferred the alternative language. For this, maintain a list of prioritized future road and sidewalk repairs, there were six who preferred the original and four the alternative. And this last one regarding pilots, six or maybe seven, depending on how I interpret one of the comments, or who preferred original and six alternative. I think it would be more fruitful to save the, the conversation about the exact wording of these until we have a list, so that you're not talking about wording for any action items that might eventually be called. But if there's a desire to do that now, George? Councillor Ryan?
So a couple of questions for Paul. Item number four of the high list, complete streets tier two. Paul's comment is questionable capacity in 2025. The logic behind this, at least as I understood it, this proposal was that this would provide the town opportunity to access money for sidewalks and roads. I assume that's something Paul would very much like, staff would like. Is that something that it can't happen in 2025, it could happen in 2026? So that's the first question.
Yes, it could happen in 2026, I think the issue with this one is the, if we're going under these, this type of design, sometimes what we are proposing that meets the intent of complete streets doesn't meet the requirements of complete streets, so typically, we may not have the width of a proper sidewalk or the bike paths or something like, bike lanes or something like that. So the question was, if we went down this road, would it really be beneficial to the town or not, because we have such limited road funds to utilize?
So the sense is that it just may not be worth the trouble?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, and that the complete streets put requirements on roads, is that right?
Yeah.
That one is.
Yep. Councillor Hanke was next, and then I see you have your hand up too, Kathy.
I'll stick with this one for now, I have questions on some other ones, but is the comment about capacity and all of the strain on future budgets related to the tier three construction application part of this one? Or the tier two prioritization plan, or both? Because there's kind of two separate items in here.
Yeah, I think what we're sensing is the DPW's capacity is pretty strained right now to take on new initiatives.
Councillor Shane, you're next.
Yeah, it's still on the same topic. My understanding was the second part, the three, brought, could bring a big chunk of money in. The first is the plan, and the plan is where, what you're thinking is staff resources to come up with the plan?
Yeah, so the requirements by the state are much more complex, if we put out the road to bid, it's, we do our own design, we send it out to the contractors, they bid on it. The state requires a much detailed, more, higher level of detail on the road, on the design application, and the level of detail on the actual, on the, on the actual plans are submitted to the state for their approval, it just extends the process for moving project, projects forward. So it's just, we understand that it accesses more funds, potentially. But the terms, in terms of the amount of work it takes to get there, it's just a lot more hoops to jump through to meet the state's requirements, so that the town engineers aren't really wild about moving in this direction, they'd rather, they're more focused on using the money that they have available to design the roads, get them out the door, and get them working on paving.
So can I just ask, because my subpart of this, which people didn't want to combine, was the plan for biking and walking. Because I understood that to be part of this first phase, first application. So if we instead made that the priority, that we want biking and walk, you know, we want, we want to start saying, where are we gonna have sidewalks, where are we gonna have bikes? Not necessarily the whole complete streets, is that less confining? Because I, I made them a combined, and we kept them separate, because I thought that would have to be done for this first round application, but I would be fine with substituting it.
So the, the question to me was, do we have capacity to take these projects on, and what I'm saying is that it's a challenge for, it would, a challenge for our existing engineering department to take on the level of detail for these things, or to initiate a whole, you know, the bike and ped plan is overdue to be updated. But if that's a priority of the council, we would seek separate funding to support that, it wouldn't come from our existing staff.
Councillor Taub.
So just a couple of questions picking up on that, is this something that we might, so DPW staff is tapped out, and this is not a good time to put this as a, an action item, might it be for a future year? Or is it really not worth the effort?
I think there's some resistance to the sort of the, the level of detail that's required to apply for these types of grants, in terms of the, in, for almost any grant, but some of them are worth it for us, I think, to go into that level of detail. But in terms of creating engineered plans, I don't know all the terminology, but they, you know, they, they expect like, all the roads to be surveyed before they get submitted, and we don't do that. You know, we, we, we put in, repair this road to this level of detail, blah, blah, blah. And then we send it out to a contractor versus surveying the whole road, it just costs more upfront to be prepared to submit an application that's gonna be competitive.
Don't need to discuss this every year, it sounds like, yeah.
Well, I think it's fair to bring it up, and you know, if, as things change at the DPW, or with the engineering department, depending on where they are staffing-wise, there might be capacity in the future. The goal is good, I'm not, nobody's arguing with that, I think they are sort of seeing the additional requirements that the state puts on to move in this direction, it's to be more of a challenge.
Excuse me, Councillor Walker?
Yes, I was just gonna recognize that, that Councillor Walker has joined us. Councillor Walker, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we're just talking about these high priority items, if you have comments, please. Councillor Shane, you have your hand up, but I think that was a leftover. Councillor Devlin-Gothier, please go ahead.
So I'm a little confused because, and I'm trying to figure out where my misunderstanding is lying, I'm looking at the application forms, and I'm looking at kind of the questions that they're asking, and these seem like good questions that we should or almost always are asking, such as, you know, is it improving, is, is it within a quarter mile of a senior destination, is it within a school? And so I'm struggling to see where there are requirements, and, and I truly am seeking to be pointed to them, where there are requirements that are beyond what we often are already asking, more than just a yes and a no. You know, so number of modes served, number of countermeasures, whether the project fulfills a network gap, if it's loaded in a high-crash location or not, whether it serves an EJ, environmental justice population. I think what I'm struggling with is if not now, when? For this type of work, so this is, we talk about needing to shift our approach to, you know, not just repaving roads the exact same way they've existed, but actually seeking to increase bike lanes and increase walkability, and I think this type of program can help to incentivize that work that we keep saying we want to do, and then keep getting, you know, we're, we keep being unable to do because of cost, and so I'm, I'm, I'd like to learn more about the, the challenges of the application process, because unless I'm reading the wrong thing, it's not, and obviously I'm not an engineer, so I'm not understanding part of this, I'm sure, but these questions don't seem, I don't know, they don't seem impossible, but maybe a misunderstanding, so I'd like to get some clarity on what specifically is adding challenge to this, which specific parts of the application, because to me, this feels like the, the shift that we need in order to start changing the way that we do our roads and sidewalks. So we can look into what, what the actual tier two prioritization plan looks like, I have, I have not looked at it personally, so I'm not sure what's involved with that. So, and I can bring that back to you.
But, but part of the answer is that it would require additional work from DPW staff to take this up, so I think that's important to keep in mind when we're looking at this holistically, in terms of our capacity and resources.
Absolutely, I know that this would go to DPW to, to do.
Councillor Ette, can you just turn your mic on for a second, say here? I just want to recognize that you've joined us. You're here? Just so we can hear you.
I'm here.
Councillor Ryan?
So wastewater treatment plant. At least my reason for putting this as high priority is a sense of urgency. Paul acknowledges that it's a high resource commitment. And that funds are gonna be requested, will be in the budget coming. Does he share the sense, or am I mistaken in the sense that it's urgent? And that it's something that we'll be working hard on in the next year, or should I maybe chill a bit?
No, I think this should be a high priority. It's gonna be a high-ticket item, but we will be bringing you, you a request for appropriation in the, in the capital project budget.
Right. I have to further, but I, I'll wait for someone else, I have other hands up, so I'll wait.
Councillor DeAngelis?
Thank you, I want to go back to the complete streets, because what I was hearing was the capacity of DPW to take it on was not there. And I think that we need to respect that. The other thing is, it, in terms of costs, we couldn't, it, it seems to me that this is something that needs to be let go of, and we need to fund the roads and sidewalks. That needs to be a high priority. I think that we're reaching too far in terms of finances. We have DPW coming up, we have FIRE, and I do not see why this has to be taken on in this year at all. So I just want to add that to the conversation. And I have other things as well, but.
Councillor Hanke?
I think I agree with Councillor DeAngelis on her comments regarding complete streets, that maybe we should concentrate.
I mean, it sounds like at most we would get a half million dollars if we completed everything and got everything in. But that it would take significant resources to get there, and might even cost us more than that, and if that's the case, it doesn't make sense to put this in. I have a couple more questions, the first one is, you wrote, you have a comment on with the one about creating housing opportunities, of working with the three institutions of higher education, that you have them written into strategic partnerships in 2025. Are there strategic partnerships we don't know of that they're written into, or is it only UMasses that you're referring to? And then I have a question about a different one. We have one strategic partnership that's been signed. So that's the one you're referring to? Okay. And then the last one on this list, the work with our legislators to explore the possibility of revising state legislation. Thank you Athena for sending me some of the information I got, so I have a question about this one on total rankings. Seven, four, high, but could you tell the council what the medium and low were, because this was one that I was, it looked like it might have a little more variation than ranking as a high priority indicates.
It'll take me a moment to find.
As she finds that, also the comments on that one concern me. About half wanted the original and half wanted the alternative. And those are two completely different options. So I think we need more discussion on whether this one would get included in, in the goals at all, because it's, seems to be very split in very different ways, and you'll hear that when Athena finds it.
So I think we had seven high, three mediums, three low. Zero delete. I didn't split out the original language and the alternative language, it was just, and you saw that when you ranked, it was just a ranking for, for the item. Councillor Hanke, did you want to say more about that?
I mean, I guess it's, it's another one where I'm not sure either one is clear enough for an action item, that would get us where we want, and given the high variability and the hot, of the rankings, even though seven said high, I think they were all saying high to different things. Three said low, three said medium. And even everyone who picked an original or an alternative, it was like half original, half alternative. So I think that's one where maybe we would think about deleting it, or completely rewording it for a wording that is stronger and clearer on the action.
I just want to point out that the council, the intent of the meeting tonight was to come to a consensus about the draft goals, and then you would have some time before you vote on the final set of goals on Monday. But there's nothing prohibiting motions to add or remove or change the language that's in here, so if, if there's a councillor who feels that it's time to make a decision on one of these, I encourage you to make a motion.
Can I ask a question about that? Are we needing to motion everything to stay in, or everything to stay out, or only those we want removed, or?
This is the list that you have, and so I would say, make a motion to remove it, this is the draft that GL recommended?
So all of them are still on it?
So.
If we have no motions, all 49 stay on tonight? Okay.
Unless there's, you know, I'm, I'm happy, if, if the group is happy to hear consensus that you're ready to remove something, I think that hopefully when we get to the, the deletes and some of the, the other items that seem a little bit more obvious, there will be consensus. But if a councillor also is ready to make a motion to make a change in language or remove something, then the floor is open for that. Councillor Griesmer, President Griesmer?
Tonight it's councillor. So I'd like to go back and agree to the point that was made about the complete streets, tier two and tier three. But I do wonder, and in fact, I'm even prepared to make a motion, do wonder whether or not, while we are looking at maintaining a list of prioritized future roads and sidewalk repairs and new sidewalks, that it can be done with an eye of preparing for the tier two and tier three application, so that we actually build up to that? Even though in this year, we would not try to do tier two or tier three. That would be the nature of my motion. I have other, another comment, but if people would like to pause with that, I'll be glad to.
Are you making a motion?
I will. I moved to, I moved to delete from this year the creation and submit a complete streets tier two prioritization plan and tier three construction application to MassDOT. However, while doing a list of prioritized future roads and sidewalk repairs and new sidewalks, that we keep in mind preparing the kind of data that we need to eventually apply for tier two and tier three. Shane, seconds?
Councillor Devlin-Gothier?
Why not split this into two? Why not focus, y'all, we gotta start making forward motion on the climate action goals and the accessibility ideals that we have for our sidewalks and our roads, and we need to start pushing that a bit more than we are. I would ask the sponsors to consider keeping, well, I lost the language, but keeping, thank you, just the complete and submit complete streets tier two prioritization plan, that's the way that, if I'm reading the application form correctly, it's 15 potential projects that you would plan to move forward under a, that would qualify hypothetically for a complete streets grant. This is a funding opportunity, but this is also for once thinking long-term and not short. We know that it's going to require, any, at any point, this is going to require a push, and I don't anticipate us being flush with time in any of our departments. I would rather think about how to reduce other obligations elsewhere and push forward on the things that allow us to bring in money to make our roads and sidewalks and other projects more accessible to folks with disabilities, more able, more accessible to kids wanting to get walked to school. This is what enables us to be able to move forward with that. So I would rather think about how to hire temporary support to, to do this, I would rather think about how to make this happen than merely cutting it, when we don't, I don't feel we even have the specifics on which parts of this are impossible. We talk about needing a prioritization plan for roads and sidewalks. Why not just focus on the prioritization plan for our projects broadly? In addition to that, so I'm unclear on why this is, I, I can agree with breaking it down to one instead of both, even though I still think we should do both, but I do not, I do not agree with striking it completely, and I think that's a mistake.
President Griesmer, you have your hand up? I think that's leftover, Councillor Hanke?
No.
Or?
So, yeah. Yeah, I'm, Athena added in, I guess the motion includes adding that language you just added to the maintain in. But I'm confused and unsure of how simply maintaining a list of road and sidewalk repairs keeps in mind preparing data for a future application, because that's not really preparing any sort of data at all. So I don't quite understand how those two halves of this motion relate to each other, or what you'd even do with the proposed added language.
Would you do and prepare data? The word and? Have two actions?
They don't relate to each other, is my thinking, I don't understand how keeping a list of what's going to be repaired with the money we've, you know, allocated, relates to preparing data for a future application. I, I need someone to explain how those relate to each other, because I don't understand how they do.
Councillor Griesmer, I, I made the assumption that you wanted to add that to this other goal, was that correct?
I did, and I'll be glad to speak to why I think it is, there might be words, I think they're related. And that is part of our practice on a regular basis is to do an inventory of our streets. And the condition of our streets, it seems to me that that's also part of getting ready for the complete streets tier two, and then going on to three. So if maybe it's a change in wording, but it does seem to me that if we're looking at how are we going to continue to prioritize our future road and sidewalk repairs and new sidewalks, that we would do it in mind, keeping in mind and how we collect the data and how we are preparing to apply for tier two and tier three, that's all.
Okay, I'm gonna call on Andy and then Jennifer, because I haven't heard from them yet. Councillor Steinberg?
Yeah, I was curious, it's my, I received one communication about this in particular from the Chair of Transportation Advisory Committee. And I was wondering whether anybody who's been attending its liaison or otherwise TAC meetings, whether they've had any discussion about this issue? And whether we should be consulting them before making a final decision?
Can anyone speak to that?
I can speak to it in broad terms. And you can cut me off if it's not appropriate. But my thought is that this is something that could work through TSO. That both these items, both the creation of a list and this the complexities of a tier two and tier three process could simply be referred to TSO. It would still be something that we'll be working on in the coming year, but it's technically off of Paul's plate, but it's certainly not off of our radar. I'm trying to wordsmith this and get it right. I don't think it's going to work this evening. And it seems that the wisest thing would be to send it to TSO where we will continue to consult with Tac and work with with Guilford and Paul and try and get some clarity on this and then come back with a perhaps a coherent proposal to the council at a later date.
Counselor Taub? I don't want to put words in the mouth of the Chair of of the Transportation Advisory Committee, but I just went back to an email because I recall getting an email from Tracy Zaffian supporting this item as a town manager goal. Again, I just glanced at it. But so in response to Andy's question, I don't know if Tac actually if if that came, if she was writing on capacity as a resident or a Chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee. But I agree with Anna. I don't, I think if we put it off, I don't know that it's ever going to be the right year to do it. So I think I also support the suggestion of breaking it in two of doing maybe tier one this year and tier three next year. But I think this is something we have to do, and it's one of those things that's never going to be a good time to do it. But but I would like to see us start started and make a commitment to go forward with tier two and three.
Counselor Devlin Goethe.
Shh, it wasn't me, I swear. I'd like to know specifically what items on the prioritization list provided by Mass DOT for tier two, the the document that they send to prioritize your projects, aren't currently being addressed by DPW when they are prioritizing or talking about their projects generally. So there's not a detailed, you know, detailed maps, it's basic or anything like that. You know, it's asking for this list of your your top prioritized projects, name, description, source, location, Google Maps link, what modes it's serving, what type of project it is. And then your assessment is, is it in a high crash area? Is it an environmental justice community? Is it a safe routes to school? Is it a safe routes for seniors? Does this project improve conditions for people with disabilities? And it does it include state owned roads? What is the estimated project range cost? What is the funding requested from Mass DOT? What other funding sources and amount, if applicable? And then how long is it going to take? To me, these feel like questions we should be asking for every project that we're doing regardless. And so I am struggling to see how this particular part of it is going to meet an extreme burden. And if so, I'm questioning what what information we're asking right now about our projects and as we prioritize them. The phrase keeping in mind doesn't help us in moving towards the tier two prioritization. Ideally, in my mind, we're already using some sort of prioritization process for all of our projects. And if anything, we should flip it, right? We should be creating the tier two application prioritization document, keeping in mind the priority list of roads and sidewalks. Because that actually addresses more of the questions that we end up asking. I think sending this to TSO is just going to kick it back to to Guilford and Jason because it's not something TSO can answer in terms of the what the upcoming projects are and all of that. So I really would like to understand a why the complete streets, tier two prioritization plan specifically is a which part of it is a heavy lift and it and differs from our current process when we look at the projects that we need to do.
Did you have anything you want to say about that right now?
Yeah, I don't have the level of detail that you're asking for right now, but I can certainly, we can have that conversation. I think what the the question was is will this, this is basically an added burden to the DPW that they with all the questions are being asked as opposed to just putting out a road that needs to be paved, that would be added burden on them.
But it's but it's sorry, but this is about the prioritization part of that, not like a road needs to be paved, let's pave it. It's saying these are the projects that we know we're looking at the coming year. Is that not something that we currently have?
So, yes, and that's what we'll be presenting to TSO once TSO gets up and running. We talk about the roads that are up for for construction repaving every year. And that gets presented to the council during our presentation when we make it.
So so and beyond just the roads and sidewalks, I'm talking broader DPW projects. So because this goes beyond just roads and sidewalks, right? Like this is other projects, including that they want to do. And so they're not answering, I have to pull up the last time that we got that prioritized list, but we're not, they're not answering the these questions on it. And so what you're saying is that the added burden would be responding to the questions on here that we don't already ask.
By law, we have to make every project ADA accessible. And, you know, that there's just not required, we're not allowed to design a road that's not accessible, that doesn't meet the ADA requirements. So.
I understand that that is a different question than improving conditions necessarily. But and then the other things aren't necessarily on that tally list, if I'm remembering right. So safe routes to schools, safe routes for seniors, environmental justice community, those are not on the the list. Okay.
Counselor Ryan?
So we currently have a motion in front of us. It's been seconded to reword this. Is that correct or is it deletion? Somebody remind me.
It's up on the screen in red. So it's deleting this fourth item and then adding language to that item down towards the bottom.
Right. And my thought is if we keep it the way it is, if we we defeat the motion and this stays in the goals document as a high priority, that this will come to TSO and a conversation will take place and answers to some of these questions can be gotten. So I guess I would feel like I would like to keep it as it is. And I would not vote for this motion if my understanding is that the process will be will take time, but it is something that TSO can certainly look into. It seems to be something that a number of counselors would like us to pursue, including me. Paul can't answer all these questions tonight, nor should he be expected to, but we can get answers. But if we adopt this motion, it's on the floor at the moment, I think I'm not sure what's going to happen. So I prefer to keep this as it is and let the process through TSO work its way.
Okay, Counselor Hanke?
I call the question.
No, there weren't any any other hands up, so. Can we, is everyone okay just voting rather than voting twice? So we'll skip the the vote on the calling the question. It looks like the discussion is done. Counselor, unless Counselor Ette. Okay.
I just wanted clarification. So a yes vote would be make the change and a no vote would be keep it as it is.
That's correct. Okay. Okay, so we'll now this vote is on the changes that are on the screen in red. Counselor DeAngelis?
Aye.
Counselor Devlin Goethe?
No.
Counselor Ette? Counselor Griesmer?
Aye.
Counselor Hanke?
No.
Counselor Hegner?
No.
Counselor Lord?
Nay.
Is it a nay? A nay?
No, no.
Thank you. Counselor Rooney?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
No.
Counselor Shane?
No.
Counselor Steinberg?
No.
Counselor Taub?
No.
Counselor Walker?
No.
Okay, so that's defeated. We're going to take this out. Okay. Counselor Hanke?
I move, I'm going to be making a lot of motions tonight, apologize. I move to delete the phrase quote and a tier three construction application to mass DOT end quote from that one.
Is there a second?
Second, Rooney.
Counselor Ryan?
My hand is down.
Your hand is up.
I know, but it's down.
Okay.
Depends on which reality you're in.
Is there any discussion? Starting with Counselor Devlin Goethe.
Yes.
Oh, Counselor Ette, did you have a comment before?
I was wondering if Counselor Hanke could speak to why she wanted to make that deletion.
Given the discussion and what the manager has said, it appears that it's the tier three application that might be much more problematic and heavy lifting than the tier two. And we want to keep moving on tier, we want to keep moving. And so I'm trying to remove the the bigger roadblock to it.
Okay, Devlin Goethe?
Yes.
Ette?
Yes.
Griesmer?
Aye.
Hanke?
Aye.
Hegner?
Yes.
Lord?
Aye.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shane?
Yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
DeAngelis?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Counselor DeAngelis? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm trying. The tilt high for the senior center ADA accessible.
Let's stay on this page. I just want to make sure that we're done with this page before we go to tilt high. Is that okay? All right. It sounds like there's consensus on the rest of this list.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
No, okay. Okay.
I had a question for Counselor Hanke. You said the, and I know we voted it already, but to clarify, should we keep the words to mass DOT in the goal? Because we would still be creating and submitting the tier two. I don't know if we have to revote on all of that. It feels like it's a clarification. Thank you.
Counselor DeAngelis? You have your hand up still. You got, okay, Counselor Griesmer?
Actually, there's two more on this side. I want to ask the town manager whether it is realistic to pursue a partnership agreement with Hampshire College, given the leadership change that's coming up. Not that I don't think it's a good goal.
Yes, because I think the existing, the current president might want to get this out of the way.
Great. I have another question.
Okay.
And that is that on the very last one regarding pilot, based on a conversation we've had in the past, it seems to me that the issue of state owned land is a much higher priority and more realistic than the nonprofit higher end institutions. And so in some way, I would like to adapt or make a motion about the language here, that it stay focused on the pilots on state owned land and just end it with that.
Is that what you're proposing?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Keeps the language, right?
Second, Devlin Goethe.
So that gets that chooses the first one over the alternative?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, yes. Lynn, is what's on the screen correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to say to your motion?
Yes, I would like to, it was, there was a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Thank you. We have had numerous conversations about this. Several people attended a MMA session where one of the state bodies is proposing something that actually would harm Amherst based on how they're assessing lands. This is not the time to walk away from the issue of state owned land and pilots. It's the time to dive in.
Thank you, Counselor Hanke.
Not on this, I have more motions.
Okay, we have a motion on the on the floor now, so I'm going to move on to your, Counselor Ryan?
So I guess I'm asking this of my colleagues and maybe they can just help me see more clearly what we're asking Paul to do. He is saying that he has these conversations, they're ongoing. Are we basically saying we want you to, I mean, it sounds like we're saying focus specifically on this, state owned land in your conversations with state legislators? That's the first question. I guess the answer is obviously yes. I also wonder what our role is. Why are we throwing this or are we throwing this just on Paul's plate? Shouldn't we also individually or collectively be speaking to our state legislators about this issue and advocating? We should. So this is not in lieu of what we're doing, but we're simply saying to Paul, this is something we collectively think is important and we'd like you to focus on it in the coming year.
A united front?
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Taub? I would still like to see conversations with Amherst College. Does that mean, I agree that having it be a goal, not including the, you know, that this could be a goal on its own to be advocating for payments in lieu of taxes for state owned land, but I would still want, maybe it's another goal, have conversations continue with Amherst College.
So I think that that would be addressed under the strategic partnership agreement with Amherst College, the the one right above that. It's not exactly a pilot, but it would be sort of compensation.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Rooney?
That helps me a little bit, yes. But I think of the, I think of the net value of, for instance, all of the facilities at UMass, all of the facilities at Amherst College. And there is, there is such a value even to those facilities that are, if you, even if you extract all the facilities that are very much teaching, teaching related, all of the revenue generating ones, all of the the auxiliary services, there is a huge value that that we can't tap as a, you know, as a town. And so I'm trying to figure, as Jennifer just said, why can't we just include the and higher education institutions to include it if possible?
Counselor Devlin Goethe?
So to, okay, it is me. I need to make this cord longer. I'm sorry. I'll do it in a second. What you're talking about changes the intention or those are two different things, right? So state owned land versus private higher education institutions are two different things. I think we are much more likely to see movement on shifting the shifting the formula for for pilot payments on state owned land and pursuing strategic partnerships separately as to as the two separate goals addressing those two issues than we are to work with our legislators to pursue pilots from nonprofits because that's what that would look like if we were trying to say pilots from Amherst and Hampshire College or just Amherst College. I think this is much more realistic. I do see this in terms of what is going on Paul's plate from this as prioritizing if data is requested or, you know, continually advocating it should be in coming up in every single meeting with our state legislators. I do see that there is work for the council to do in this, such as passing resolutions or having a, I'm going to say the wrong term, the one where we all sit down and just talk about an issue. I don't remember the term as it's.
Works.
Thank you, work session. I didn't want to say the wrong one. On the report that Athena sent out from the state auditor's office, I see that there are things for both the town manager and the council to do on this. I think it would be a mistake to take out the teeth of this being about revising the state legislation about payments in lieu of taxes involving state owned land. Take the the amount of state owned land we have is immense, but it doesn't, the the formula does not take into account the use of that land. So I don't know any other state owned lands in Massachusetts that have 30,000 visitors a day for most of the year, right? So we need to be pushing for this formula change as well as those partnership agreements, but they're with two different bodies and they are trying to achieve two very different things. So I I strongly support this this change.
Counselor Rooney, did you speak on this already? Okay, Counselor Ette?
The language is work with our legislators to explore the possibility of revising state's legislation. I'm wondering what would at the end of the year, what? legislation. I'm wondering what would, at the end of the year, what success would look like? How would we actually create this?
Uh, Councilor Shane, I don't think you've spoken on this one yet. Please go ahead.
So I'll speak to what Rebecca just asked. If we got more money, we would know we got more money. We just saw what we're getting now, and it's zero increase. You know, so there's a dollar amount that we know each year. So this is actually one of the most measurable things we have, and it's a goal. But I just want to say a quick word about the nonprofit side, you know, or big others. There's a huge anti-that coalition based in Boston called Mass General, Beth Israel, and name all the other big facilities. So there is a pilot group, and I've attended multiple meetings of it, that proposes to take 25% of the value and, and tax it, because a lot of, there's a lot of interest in other places, but you run against a very powerful group that has the legislatures here, and it just never goes anywhere. So I'd be happy, because I attend these other meetings, to let people come. So as individual counselors, we can be part of the larger group. It's just, I think, focus here has a better chance of yielding something.
Uh, Councilor Hegner, we haven't heard from you. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Councilor Ette. Um, I think that if this requires legislatures to act on something, which is beyond the town manager's ability to do. So all, all the town manager can do is, is ask, really. Um, and I think that you could, maybe we could strengthen this a little bit, but I, I think the idea of just advocating for this is what we're, what we should be asking for.
Uh, I think we've heard from everybody. I just want to remind you all that we've been here on this page for almost an hour, and we have, we have quite a bit to go. So I'm going to ask everyone to keep their comments short, and I'll, um, I'll try and remind you of that as well. Mandy, is your hand still up? Okay, not on this. Okay. Councilor Grismer?
Call the question. The question is, the way it appears on the screen.
This right here, removing this part. Uh, Councilor Ette, this is a, it's to call the question. This is a vote to end the discussion. So a yes ends the discussion and moves us to the, uh, vote on removing this language on the screen.
So calling the question isn't to vote, it's simply to end the discussion?
The, the vote to call the question ends the discussion, and we move immediately to a vote on this. So is your vote yes to end the discussion?
Yes.
Thank you. Grismer?
Yes.
Hanneke?
Yes.
Hegner?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
DeAngelus?
Aye.
Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
That's unanimous. We're going straight to the vote to remove this language. Grismer?
Yes.
Hanneke?
Aye.
Hegner?
Aye.
Lord?
Aye.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shane?
Yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
DeAngelus?
Aye.
Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
Ette?
Aye.
Wonderful. Uh, Councilor Hanneke?
I move to split the maintain a list of priorities, prioritized future road and sidewalk repairs, and the alternative into two separate action items, and keep both of them.
That's a motion to
Basically, keep them both, not have one as an alternative. Because right now it's listed as an alternative.
I second that.
Just put the word and in?
No, it's two separate.
Two separate actions.
Okay, Councilor DeAngelus, this is conversation on this particular change right here. The, okay, that's where we are. So I'm looking for discussion. Uh, Council Rooney?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm not going to support separating this out and, and having a separate one. I would not support the second item, and that is that we're asking for a list of priority roads and sidewalks, and there will be conversation at TSO, I would hope, on the process and how it's done. That can be reported to, to the council. Um, I don't really feel that we have the need to talk about, tell, to tell the town manager how to prioritize. I think we can question the list that comes to us. That is a way of, that is a way of challenging it. Um, but, but frankly, to create a whole new item that just says, and you must talk with us about how to do it, how to set that priority. Um, I think we've already given quite a bit of instruction on, uh, let's aim toward a Tier 2 complete street plan, and all that entails, that will certainly hopefully inform the priority list of sidewalks and streets. So I would, I would not support this action to separate and create a new item. Thank you.
Taub?
Um, I would agree, because I actually wondered, I didn't bring it up when it came up last time, if this is something that in TSO, we're discussing what responsibilities and scope of work a proposed transportation and parking, traffic and, uh, commission might have, and this might go there.
Councilor Ette?
I'm wondering, since we split one item into two, which exactly is the high priority? Because if we don't know then, should we be discussing it?
Councilor Devlin Gauthier?
I would support actually remove it. I'm not making a motion on top of a motion, I'm just noting. I would support removing fully that, uh, second part, the alternative language, or that new one, um, because I feel that, I actually, to be honest, this kind of could all go away if we are truly going with that complete streets Tier 2 prioritization plan, and if our road and sidewalk repairs fall under that, uh, that would cover both of these things in my mind.
Okay. Councilor Hanneke?
So I did this because the comments indicated that both had support. Um, I would actually vote to delete the maintain a list of prioritized future roads and sidewalks and keep the conversation, frankly, um, because I think we need the conversation. I think a lot of the prioritization, everything that, when residents come to us, they say, why isn't mine prioritized? And I think we as a council have some sort of responsibility to indicate to the manager in sidewalks, are we prioritizing creating new, or are we prioritizing repairing sidewalks? Where are we prioritizing creating new? Right now, we haven't had those conversations. When we prioritize doing roads, you've kind of had that conversation in TSO, but the council has not had that conversation. Um, and given complete streets and all, and the costs that might go along with that, I think there needs to be a conversation in the council of, when you do do a road, are we doing just a complete repair of what's there and a resurfacing of what's there, or do we want to add sidewalks to it? Do we want to add bike lanes to it? Where are our priorities on spending that money? And we haven't had those conversations. And I think those are the conversations we need to be having, more than just bring us a list of what you want. Um, so that's why I, I would rather keep what was the alternative, but I thought the best thing to do was split them, so that we didn't fight which one should be kept and which one shouldn't be.
Council Ryan?
I have to agree with Mandy that, um, if you just have a list, a thousand, when people are going to ask why, and why am I here, and why, right? That's, so we have to have some sense of what the, the logic is behind it. You could argue, as I think Council Rooney was suggesting, if I remember correctly, that this is something that will happen in TSO, um, and it might, but I think both are important. We want a list, and we also want a sense of what the logic is behind it. So separating them out makes both points. I think that both end up in TSO. Um, if you just have the, the first one, um, and all, all Paul is being asked to do is generate a list, uh, there we have a list. I'm sure they, they could present a list probably tomorrow.
Okay. Um, Councilor Walker, you had your hand up and down, so I'm just noticing that your hand isn't up anymore. Please put it back up if you have a comment. Council Grismer?
I have no problem with splitting these, because basically, one's asking for a conversation with the council, the other one is making sure the public knows what the list says. What I, what does strike me, however, is the phrase, "on how to prioritize future roads, etc." So in other words, we're going to tell them how to prioritize? I find that a little strange.
Council Steinberg?
I'm having trouble finding the right time to do this until we, because we're not quite ready to present to the council the discussion about the Transportation and Parking Commission, and Transportation and Parking Commission may take over this responsibility. Decision, the discussion in the council could be, we don't want to have a Transportation and Parking Commission. There's a lot of process around something that's already out there and is involved a lot of work, um, that is within a couple of months, probably, of being before the council. And I, I just, uh, wonder why we're spending time on making this decision now.
Councilor Walker?
Sorry, I was having some connectivity issues. Um, but I seconded this motion, uh, for much of what Mandy Jo said, but I think the key piece for me is, uh, the transparency. And I think that this is an item that comes up in almost every constituent conversation that I have, and I know that the roads and sidewalks are very important to our residents, and they want to know what's happening. And so while I think it's great that we have, um, a public list that they can read, and that's updated annually, I think we're going to get questions more often than annually, and I think it would be helpful for us to have a conversation at the council level, because that's where people who are wanting to hear these updates will most likely be tuning in. Um, so again, that's why I am supporting this.
Okay. I don't see any additional hands, so we're going to move to the vote. Council Grismer?
Aye.
Hanneke?
Aye.
Hegner?
Aye.
Lord?
Aye.
The vote here is to divide these two goals that are on the screen shown in red. It's to split them into two separate goals, yes. Uh, Councilor Rooney?
No.
Uh, Ryan?
Aye.
Shane?
Yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
DeAngelus?
Aye.
Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
Ette?
Aye.
It passes 12 to 1. Councilor Taub?
Probably didn't realize I was voting. Um, so the, we're not now going to vote, are we going to vote on each one? We just voted to split them in half. We didn't.
Now there are two on the list.
Okay. We didn't vote on, to approve, okay.
There wasn't a, there wasn't a deletion here. It was just dividing it into a new one. Council Hanneke?
Um, one more, because we have to get rid of the alternative somehow. Um, so I moved to delete the alternative from the develop a plan for addressing critical space and program needs at the senior center. Well, and the words including and, if they're still there. Um, so then it's at senior center.
Is there a second? It's deleting, deleting this language that's in red right here.
So is this just wordsmithing? Do we have to vote on the, is that all we're doing?
There was an alternative that said remove.
Dangling word.
No, the dangling word is just there, but there was an alternative that said remove develop. So that's the
It's a decision to, yeah, to choose the original or the alternative. Council Hanneke, do you want to speak to your motion?
I think we need the plan with the money before we do anything, and so if the money, it makes sense to start with the plan and the money, not address them, which requires you have construction contracts and all, too.
Council Grismer?
Should this more correctly say, "at the Bang Center"?
No?
Just, it's in the Bang Center. Are we only doing the senior center?
It's not.
Got it. Thank, thank you. I'm still.
Council DeAngelus, did you have another comment? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so the vote is to remove including and and the alternative. I think we are to... Hanneke?
Aye.
Hegner?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Shane?
Yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
DeAngelus?
Yes.
Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
Ette?
Aye.
Grismer?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Is there any further discussion or motions on this page? Being done, I'm going to move to the next one. Floor is open for discussion of motions. Council Devlin Gauthier?
Yeah, the third one on this list, clarify to the public what departments manage which services and where and how complaints or requests for help regarding those services should be made. Uh, I know I would lose this because it tilted high, but I would strike to remove this. I, I think that this is really vague, um, and I think that it's not necessarily the most helpful of, of goals, but on the other hand, I'm fine keeping it in here, because I think it could be met very easily with a simple flow chart. So if we want an easy win, we can keep it in. Um, but I, I just wanted to put it out there. I don't, uh, don't love this one. I, I don't think it's necessarily as helpful as it could be.
Is that a motion to remove?
No.
Uh, Council Hanneke?
Um, I'm going to move to remove that one that she was just talking about, so clarify, remove, move to delete the, clarify the, to the public.
This whole thing?
That whole thing. Okay, the whole action item. May I speak to it?
Yes.
Um, while it tilted high, I believe that it had a lot more variability than a tilt high indicates. Um, I think there were a lot more people that ranked it low, medium, or even delete, um, even if there were a few that tilted it to high. Um, so I, I think there are more important ones on here than one that had a lot of variability as to how it was ranked.
Okay. Council Ryan?
I agree. I believe this should be deleted.
Okay, Council Walker?
Um, I'm not necessarily opposed to deleting this, but I do think, and I'm sorry, I don't know exactly where we fell on the website, um, management and like the, the changing of the website, but I think that this would be a lovely thing to see on our website. I don't know if it needs to be a whole goal, though.
Council Rooney?
I actually voted this high, um, because I myself have difficulty finding things, finding information, and it seemed, I, I did not expect it would be a major investment. So I was simply looking at clarification of how to find, you know, So I was simply looking at clarification of how to find, you know... If you're looking for dog licenses, I think it's fairly easy to find that. But finding a report or something like that, it's just pretty tough to wade through all the sources of information. You almost have to really, really know what department does it, what, you know, what element you're looking for in order to find it. So I felt that in terms of communicating with the public, being able to find information is probably the most important thing to take the burden off staff, if you will. So rather than just deny it, I think it would be... It's just something that I think we all need to be able to support.
It might be helpful if you speak to this a little bit because other towns... In our discussion, you had said that other towns do this one call to town hall, but that would be... Requires some resources to set up something like that. And the 3-1-1 would be an even higher dedication of resources.
Yes. So when we thought, like, the perfect solution on this is what they call 3-1-1, which is like a 9-1-1 system, but you call, someone answers, they answer whatever call you have, no matter what, as long as it's not emergency. Those several cities have introduced that. It's a high resource need, and I think that's the ideal solution. I don't think we're talking about that here. What I'm hearing is people saying the search function for the website isn't as good. I tend, you know, I think there's some... If you can give me sort of more guidance on what those things are, that we can address that. The search function on our website isn't great, but in terms of, you know, using Google, usually it actually is much more accurate. So I think if it's... We try to have in our website, we will be making improvements in it this year because we're entitled to. But it's not going to be an overhaul of the entire website this year.
And that'll come up when we get to the tilt-medium, the website improvements. That's where that is.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe this ties into the website thing.
Okay. Counselor Shane?
I'm fine with deleting this. And my one thought, Paul, is we could send you notes on, for example, people don't know to where to find, see, click, complain kind of thing. They don't know where to find it. They don't know, who do I go to if my sidewalk's a mess? So it's certain... If we sort of had somewhere, what do you do if? And so it's more of a website function, and then the counselors could get a little cheat sheet when someone asks us to.
I think that's a good idea. Or if you wanted to, give us the things that you're hearing, that we can, you know, if we get enough of them, we will put it on more prominently in our website, things like that.
Counselor Ette?
I think, for me, I thought it was going to be a layup because I wasn't thinking of a phone call. I was simply thinking of slight improvements that could be made to the website. So I think I ranked this high and actually wanted website improvements deleted because I think this covers it more than the website.
Okay. Counselor Ryan?
I hear and I agree with the concerns. I certainly get a fair number of constituents who are frustrated at times. And what I do try to do, and I'm sure my colleagues do, too, is to try to help people figure it out. I think it's town services and outreach. So again, this is something that I think towns TSO can take up and explore and come back to the council and work with Paul and staff on particular ways, particular fixes, if possible. So I think we should delete it, but I think it's something TSO should take up.
Okay. Counselor Taub?
I think a lot of it could be covered when we get to... Like, I would be comfortable taking this off if... And then I would make a higher priority, the website. Example, we were doing district newsletter, and I just went on the website and did a search for Winterfest 2025, and I could not get to it from that.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other hands, so we're moving to a vote, and it's to remove what's in red and struck through here. Counselor Hagner?
Sorry. Can we just add and move to website conversation?
It's there. It'll be in tilt-medium. You want me to put a note?
Point of order, but that note is just for us. It's not part of the motion. Is that correct? We are not voting. Thank you.
Counselor Hagner?
I'm sorry. Can we clarify what we're voting on?
To remove this language that's in red. Remove it altogether. Lord?
Aye.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shane?
Yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Aye.
Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
Ette?
Me.
Griesmer?
Aye.
Hanke?
Hi.
That's 12 to 1 and passes. Okay. Looking for discussion and motions. George, Ryan?
So item 2, Senior Center Transportation Program that runs five days a week. This is something I personally feel is strong about. It's something I've heard a lot about from Council on Aging and friends at the Senior Center, but Paul's comment is there's no budget capacity. And my feeling is, well, we're going to have to just work on that. So I'm just assuming we're going to leave it in. Is that assumption correct?
It's there until you take it out.
I got a motion. I'm not sure whether to move to delete both of them or just everything but the alternative on the Senior Center one. So I'm gonna start with moving to delete that box except for the... Well, so moving to delete the phrase "Senior Center ADA Accessible Transportation Program that Runs Five Days a Week," and then "alternative," but keep the rest of it.
Got it. Is there a second? So this is what's left. Increase Senior Accessible Transportation offerings. Is there a second?
Second, Rooney.
Looking for discussion. There were a bunch of hands before, so yes, please speak to your motion.
So I struggled with whether to delete the whole thing or leave the increase senior accessible transportation offerings. I respect the manager's budget capacity comments, five-days-a-week comments. We... If we are keeping that in before we move on tonight, if this vote is voted down, I want to hear from the counselors as to what reallocation of resources they would want in order to fund a five-day-a-week thing, that we can't just leave it to him. He needs guidance from us. And I just don't get the feeling the council is willing to reallocate a huge number of resources to this. But increasing senior accessible transportation offerings may be possible without a budget allocation, potentially. And I don't know whether it is, which is why I struggled with whether we should delete the whole thing or not. But I thought I'd just start with the first half.
Okay. Looking for succinct comments. Counselor Devlin Gauthier. Immediately, right at you.
I see it. Paul, you noted that unless we reallocate resources or secure grants, could you say a little bit about the availability of grants that might... Is that a feasible thing to expect, that we might be able to achieve a grant? I'm sorry, I'm trying, even if it's not for five days.
So we have been utilizing grants already, and so that's pretty much how it's been operating in terms of donation of the vehicle, including that. So unless there's a new source of revenue or else we reprioritize, you know, we're really... Our finance director is here because we are really tight on money, and there are no new initiatives coming. In fact, it's the opposite. So that's why I just want the council to be highly cognizant that it's a zero-sum game here.
Counselor Shane?
I think I'm okay with what Mandy's done to tone it down a bit, but I'm worried this is micromanaging. And the second piece is, I went to this fabulous program called Morning Mugments for the kids that happens at seven, and it was mentioned that there are hobbits that want to come, but there's no van to get them there because there's no driver to drive the van. So we're short on money for both van drivers. And they said there are vans, and I think with seniors, there are vans. There's just no one to drive them. So it is a problem, and I don't think we should be adding anything to the budget. It's where Mandy just said, unless we have a place, we're going to cut. And we're looking at... We just heard today that the health insurance increase is nearly 20%. It's not the 13 that we'd originally thought of. So we just saw a lot of dollars fly out the door of our budget. There's just not room to add something. So I'm all for getting a grant for something, but that doesn't sustain it. So I would remove... To remove it altogether or to leave it in this, try to increase it wording.
Counselor Griesmer?
I think there's various ways to make this happen. So therefore, I support the alternative language that we're putting in, even though the word "alternative" is not there. And I think it's through collaboration. Thank you.
Devlin Gauthier?
Sorry. Paul, with the availability of... Is the PVTA senior bus still in operation? Because that runs Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:00, and is available for anyone 60 years and up. Is that not still running? I was just looking on the website for what else was out there.
I'm not sure which one. There is a bus that goes from Amherst to Greenfield that the PVTA has funded. Maybe it's something...
This says door-to-door transit.
So PVTA, that would just be the normal PVTA service?
It does three days a week. Door-to-door, so it wouldn't be the normal, because it wouldn't be a bus stop. Three days a week, is that what you said, Athena?
One second.
Depending what the... If that's a PVTA service, it's not a service the town provides.
I understand. I'm just trying to figure out if it's still happening because if we're duplicating services. Because the PVTA website says dial-ride hours are Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m. The Senior Center website says Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I'm just trying to figure out what's currently there, and maybe that's a bigger question, but I'm just unclear.
So ADA vans for PVTA is standard in all communities. They are required to do, you know, a call for a ride for door-to-door service for accessible van coverage. It is difficult, I know from working in other communities, to get those rides and time them, but there is a requirement, and PVTA does provide that. My understanding is that the Council on Aging has also received a van, a donated van from the PVTA, that they are operating three days a week because that's what they have staffing for in trying to augment the ADA accessible van for the senior groups.
Thank you. Counselor Griesmer?
I wonder if a friendly amendment would be explore options for increasing senior accessible transportation offerings so that if we keep going at it, but we... And we don't eliminate it, but we don't feel like we have to trade off for dollar...
That would be fine with me.
Counselor Rooney? You were the seconder of the motion.
It was to add explore options for in...
Are you okay with that friendly amendment? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we're to Lord. So it's to... The motion here that you're voting is to remove this language that's struck through and to add this language that's underlined. Lord?
Aye.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shane?
Yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
DeAngelis?
Aye.
Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
Ette?
Aye.
Griesmer?
Aye.
Hanke?
Aye.
Hagner?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Steinberg? Grab your hand up. Okay. Counselor Shane?
I'm moving on to another topic.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay. So the... When I rated these, I moved the very one last one on the page that presented schematic design, I moved it up to be part of the committee work of DPW and FIRE. I understand it's the building committee work. That's the comment here. But what attracted me to this wording is a timeline for getting a schematic design so we could go out to bid. And if anything, I'd rather keep this, that you have to form a committee to do this. But you could form a committee and have them talk for two or three years, you know.
Not in Amherst, no.
Even on the school building committee, because we had to go through five stages before we got to schematic design. So what I liked about this is that we were saying we want actually to get moving on this and get it designed so we could do at least this one. So everyone wants to keep splitting these to smaller parts. So I'd rather have this before, form the committee and present a schematic design than leave them... Delete this and leave just a committee. So that's just... It's a wordsmithing, like move it up to be part of the committee is what I wanted to So my motion would be whatever it's number six, number six on the page before, is to, you know, it says form a committee, form a building committee, and then it would be and present a schematic design. So just move that all up. So the idea that committee itself has a mission.
Second, DeAngelis.
So your motion is both to add these words and to remove that goal from the second page, is that right?
Not leave it as a separate one, so move it into the other one.
So take this out and then add the language here.
Move that language exactly up to that exact... Yeah. So read as a...
And present.
Committee does its work, and we get a design. So we see an outcome from the work.
Is there a second?
DeAngelis, second.
Discussion on this motion, Counselor Devlin Gauthier?
Best practice in goal setting. Everything needs to be specific. Everything should be one action as much as possible. When we combine action items, we make mushier expectations. We make it harder to have clarity as a body as to whether or not it was achieved, because if it's partially achieved, we end up with a mix right and down the middle when we average out whether or not it was achieved. We do not reduce the amount of work. As you said, both of these need to occur, or one needs to occur for the other to occur. So they both will occur, but to combine them dilutes the... Dilutes our ability as a council to declare whether something is complete or not, and doesn't change anything about the amount of work. I think this is pointless. I think this is unnecessary wordsmithing, and I would urge this body to resist combining specific action items.
Okay.
GOL worked really hard... Hang on. GOL worked very hard to differentiate these out, to make sure that each action item was its own goal, it was its own action item for this reason.
Okay. Counselor Ette?
I'd like to begin by saying that wordsmithing is getting a bad rap. Okay. But on to other things. I wonder about if this is feasible within a year, from what I see. Form, appoint building committee, and present a schematic design. I think I would like to know if that's something that is feasible within one year.
Is there any other discussion before vote on this?
And people understand I want all the wording of that schematic design, right? I don't want you to copy the whole thing. And it's for one of the buildings, all the way to the end, and see why that whole piece is moving up.
You want this whole thing?
Okay. I just wanted to make clear that's what I was suggesting.
You want this whole thing in there?
Yeah. Because it's... I don't expect FIRE also. And I'm putting a focus on DPW. And if anything, I would keep just that one on a... Because that's the important one.
We are to Rooney.
Yes.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shane?
Yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
DeAngelis?
Aye.
Devlin Gauthier?
Nope.
Ette?
No.
Griesmer?
Aye.
Hanke?
No.
Hegner?
Yes.
Lord?
No.
Nine to four, it passes? Back down. There we are. One left in this tilt-high category. Is there any discussion, motions? Counselor Griesmer?
I'm looking for clarification. The very top one on tilt-high was then broken in to include three additional bylaws, best and two others. And I'm trying to figure out how that voting came out. Because if we leave this general one in, it still opens the door for more bylaws this year. I'm not opposed to more bylaws, I'm just, it's feasible this year.
The prioritization from counselors came out low for best two-stroke engines and fossil fuels in new construction. Did you want to say something to this?
No, just, yes. So what I was saying is, what I would look at this in terms of, if you're saying proposed focused action, you know, focused bylaws, these are the bylaws that are in the, in the queue that we're working on. And that's what would, it will take the year, I think, to get these, these three moving through.
And then the, the required ADU changes as well would be queued up after this. Is there any further discussion or motions on this page? Counsel Rooney?
Well, it seems like if, if what Paul says, then, then solar bylaw, best, ways taller, are meeting this goal, and we're working on them, so we don't, so good. We'll, we'll get to the finish line faster on this one.
Counselor Griesmer?
So my question is, should it say including in the list the bylaws that in fact we are working on?
Paul, you had said that you don't need it to say the bylaws that are in process that we are currently supporting. Is that correct?
Right, so I think if you've already moved something forward, or if it's coming through the council, we're going to still work on those. Just trying to look at that.
So these three, are you looking for these three?
Yeah.
They're on your low page.
Are we moving on?
Counsel DeAngelo?
They're in the pipeline. We're working on them, the staff is working on them now, so I don't think they need to be listed. And any counselor can introduce anything during the year, whether, and then it gets referred to committee or not.
Okay. Counsel Tom?
My only question about not including what we're in process of working on is, if, if and when they're accomplished, shouldn't you get credit for that? So, so it'll be on our evaluation? Okay, because she'll say that's what you accomplished this year, so, okay.
If we can accomplish them this year, the delay belongs to the council.
Might still be here talking about goals.
If staff accomplishes it, they should get credit.
Okay, no further discussion on this page. Counsel Griesmer?
Yes.
Best has never been referred.
It's, it's, it's under development. It's being developed by staff that'll be proposed. So solar bylaw is in CRC. And when, when staff has capacity after solar is done, then they'll bring best forward. When there's capacity after best is done, then they'll bring the changes to the ADU that are required by law forward.
Thank you.
Yes. This may be premature, but can you, we need to talk about ADU being delayed that long, when ADU went into effect two days ago. Like, if we're literally talking about ADU won't touch until best is done, Dave's over here like.
We're not sequencing that way, we're just.
Okay. Okay.
ADU's coming first. ADU's coming first. Okay. Okay, I don't hear any other discussion on this page, so we're going to move on. Kathy, Counsel Shane?
Okay, I, on the very first one, update the capital inventory. We had actually a fairly long discussion of the capital inventory when we were putting it together at JCPC on what was doable with existing information and not an enormous amount of staff work. Much of what is added here is not just not feasible in 2025, it's really difficult. So we came up with some kind of, they're simpler. This is a gas machine, this is a hybrid, this is an electric. It's very old, and it's not so very old. How much does, how much heat does the building use? You know, some things that were measurable. So I think just keeping up with the capital inventory that we've got, we had a hard time updating it last year, just on staff time. I wouldn't add more to the capital inventory. So I had it as a delete, not just even, not because I don't like the capital inventory, but I thought you don't want to have too many things in a capital inventory that you can't get information on and you can't keep current.
Thank you. Counsel Devlin Gauthier?
For many years, we had a goal in here that was transition the municipal fleet and buildings away from the use of fossil fuels. What we talked about in GOL was that that, on the face of it, is not doable in a year at all, and we don't actually know what it would take to do that and where we should be pushing first, which leaves JCPC, and I was often this person asking for every vehicle, could we make this electric? Could we make this electric? Could we make this electric? We need to understand as a council, and we need to know that the town has considered what the priorities are for transition and what the criteria are for transition. So for example, with police cars, what, we can't just switch over to, you know, whatever electric car comes off the lot. We need to make sure that the car fits the standards for police vehicles as set by whoever sets those standards. So where we, after conversation with the town manager, landed was that instead of saying switch the fleet over and switch the buildings over and all of that, it's to actually identify what are the criteria for doing so, and what are the priorities? What are the ones we need to do first? So that was my first comment in terms of why this is not the same thing that we're already doing, and it's not the same thing that we've had in past goals. I would like to make a motion to insert the words for the 2026 capital inventory after the parenthesis, the closed parentheses, A. So comma, for the 2026 capital inventory, to make this more doable per Paul's comment, because I think we're stuck in a, a pattern of goals coming at a weird time when then capital inventories get done, so I'd rather give it more time. But we have to get it in a, we can't say we'll put it in the goals next year, because we'll run into the same problem, so.
Are you updating the inventory or are you updating priorities? It's the inventory I'm worried about.
It would, it wouldn't update the inventory. It would kind of go along with the inventory. It would not update the actual inventory itself. It would, well, I mean, it could. I don't know what format Paul would put it in, but it would be an additional item to talk about what the criteria and priorities for that transition are.
Can, can we ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Can we clarify that 2026, you mean FY '27?
I mean FY '27. Paul's comment of not feasible before the 2025 deadline, I should have said 2026 deadline, but yes, FY '27.
Thank you.
Just a clarification question. Could you insert that after, right before capital?
Sure.
Would that be?
If that makes you happier.
No, just a thought. And I will second the motion.
You wanted to put it here instead, George?
It's up to the motion proposer. I just thought it might be simpler, but I second the motion.
George is right, it does make it simpler.
If, if I could.
Yes, please.
Just, just to note, in the climate leader designation application, it does require accept adopting a vehicle policy, which we have done, which, I'm not sure if it's gone out to you or not, but I can share that with you. And the schools have done the same thing. And it, and it talks about prioritizing when possible electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles.
Thank you. I think this, and, and I appreciate that. I think the difference here is kind of clarifying what the criteria are and the priorities are.
Counsel Hanke? Is there any more discussion on this one before?
We seem to have a sidebar. Speak.
I don't see any hands. So are we ready to vote? Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Aye.
Counsel Shane?
Are we voting on the rewording?
You're voting on adding FY '27.
I abstain.
Counsel Steinberg?
Aye.
Counsel Tom?
Yes.
Counsel Walker?
Yes.
Counsel DeAngelo?
Aye.
Counsel Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
Counsel Ette?
Aye.
Counsel Griesmer?
Aye.
Counsel Hanke?
Aye.
Counsel Hegner?
Yes.
Counsel Lord?
Aye.
Counsel Rooney?
Yes.
It's unanimous with one abstention. Counsel Hanke, please go ahead.
So this medium section is missing one, so I'm going to, I guess, move to add the following action item. Work with the council to identify and propose revisions to policies, bylaws, and regulations to dismantle discrimination.
I'm sorry, that should have been there. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I second.
Counsel Hanke, did you want to speak to that?
I think it should be in the action items, and I know it was just accidentally left off with all the stuff, but this is how we add them, so I had to make the motion to do it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Shane? Counsel Shane?
I, I'm not sure, wasn't that one we already rated?
Rated as medium, but was left off of this particular document.
It was missing?
Yes, just from this document. It's in the spreadsheet we got.
So what you, so what you're doing is adding back something that was medium?
That got omitted.
That got omitted. So that's what we're doing here, not voting on this one in particular?
Right.
Okay. Then I guess yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
DeAngelo?
Yes.
Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
Ette?
Aye.
Griesmer?
Aye.
Hanke?
Aye.
Hegner?
Aye.
Lord?
Aye.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan?
Aye.
Unanimous? Looking for other discussion or motions on this page? Counsel Hanke?
I move to delete the alternative, create a plan for and establish a resident oversight board consistent with the council's November 14, 2022 vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Griesmer? Thank you. Counsel Hanke, will you speak to your motion?
I'm still very concerned. I actually voted to delete both of these, I will be perfectly honest with you, because I'm extremely concerned of the ability to do this legally, given the existence of the post-commission at the state level. And so, but I understand there are a lot of counselors that want something in here, and it is in process, but I cannot support establishing something when we haven't even seen what it might look like, how it might operate, or any of that, given not just my concerns about stepping on state laws with the post-commission, but also with just how it would even work at all. So that's why I'm seeking to accept or keep the one that is a plan only.
Yeah, so just on, on the alternative, I can't establish the resident oversight board. It's a council action, so I don't think this could be a goal that I could achieve.
Counsel Rooney?
I think that answered my question.
Counsel Shane?
I didn't see, I thought we'd see in the comment column, Paul, that this has a budgetary impact. I mean, we've never really talked about the staffing requirement, but my understanding, when I looked at them, it has a budgetary impact. So I'm kind of okay with proposing a plan, but I want to know what it's going to cost.
Counsel Walker?
This isn't neutral.
Thank you.
So I understand that Paul says that this is a council action, but I do also know that there is a current advisory board set up. And so I don't know how that falls in here, but I know that one of my comments on this was that that board's meetings be public, so that there could be some transparency, and so that we could know what was going on and what kind of decisions were being made. Because I do agree with Mandy Jo in that we don't even know what is being proposed here. And I would like to be a little bit more in the know, and I'm not sure how those coincide, considering Paul's comment, but I know that, I think he, that's in his purview, the, the advisory board, and so I'm wondering if that can be addressed.
Just to clarify, my comment was that in order for there to be a resident oversight board, I can't do it independently. I can present a, a plan to the council, and then the council ultimately has to create it. So what my point was, is I can't unilaterally create a resident oversight board that's a council action.
Okay, so it's just the second portion of the proposed alternative?
Yep.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this? Counsel Steinberg, you're next. How do you vote?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Walker?
I'm so sorry. What are we voting?
You're voting to delete what's in red right here, the alternative, and keep what's in black.
Okay, yes.
DeAngelo?
Aye.
Devlin Gauthier? Ette?
Aye.
Griesmer?
Aye.
Hanke?
Aye.
Hegner?
Aye.
Lord?
Aye.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shane?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Counsel Ryan?
I have a motion, the third item on this sheet. I would like to propose the following language. Provide training regarding racial equity to the town council. So strike rights and other options, and strike employees and members of the public.
I'll second.
So I'm happy to speak to that if you wish.
Is, is this correct, what you're looking at now?
You should read, provide training regarding racial equity to the town council.
Are you taking out rights and other options?
Well, I'm not quite sure what other options means. Maybe someone can clarify that for me. Basically, what I'm asking by this motion is that we have something that's been long overdue, which is council training in racial equity. But I'm happy to change the wording if someone thinks it would be better. But I think as the comment makes clear, this is continuing, and what I don't think we have is, maybe we have it, I missed it, but I don't know that we as a body have actually asked Paul to specifically provide this to us. So rather than talking about employees or members of the public, I thought it would be appropriate that we ask that this training be provided to the council in the coming year.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, did you want to delete rights and other options or leave that?
That is what I have proposed, unless someone thinks the wording should be, yes. The answer is yes.
Is there a second? Thank you. So discussion on this change. Counsel DeAngelo?
Yes, I'd like to keep in rights and other options, because one of the things
because one of the things that's true about racial equity is that right now we have a federal government that's talking about deporting people who are undocumented immigrants, deporting students who protest. And so I think when we look at racial equity, we need to include immigration or people who are
Okay.
immigrant, legal or illegal immigrants in our nation, in our city or in our town. So I would like to understand better some of the options that I have in terms of addressing ICE or whoever.
Okay. Counselor Ryan, are you taking that as a friendly amendment? Okay. It wasn't very coherent, sorry.
No, it's fine. It's just that this issue is, in my mind, is related to the issue of racial equity. I certainly agree that we have a concern today about immigration and, but that's a whole nother, it seems to be another issue entirely. So I'd like to keep the focus where it is.
Okay. Counselor Rooney?
And I would like to make a friendly amendment to return employees and members of the public to the list. It does include the word town council, so we are included. If we get training, then that action item can be checked off. But I don't want to discontinue the training of employees and reaching out to members of the public, specifically through, what's the group, the DEI group?
Right.
So I would, I would, I would push back gently and say, we want to continue to provide training to those other elements as well, not just town council.
You were asking for a friendly amendment, George?
And again, I would, based on Paul's comment and what I know is happening, it's ongoing for employees and members of the public. The Human Rights Commission has been very active as well. But what has not happened is we have not been involved, and that's not anybody's fault. I'm not pointing anything or blame, but again, I would like to keep the focus on racial equity and the town council.
Okay. Counselor DeAngelis, I see your hand, but I'm going to call on Counselor Atte and Taub before. Counselor Atte, please go ahead.
Perhaps I missed something. I was wondering what the difference between the friendly amendment is and what the status quo would be. At least on the
There haven't been friendly amendments. Right now, George's motion is to delete this and this in this here. Delete what's in red. There have been no friendly amendments. Counselor Taub?
Yeah, I think this gets to, you know, picking up on what Pam said, that, you know, currently the Human Rights Commission and the DEI staff have been doing, you know, these terrific workshops on racial healing. So that's providing this focus to the public. So I guess it's just being clear that that will continue. It's like the bylaws that are already a process. So by, if we adopt this, it doesn't mean that we're going to stop doing what is currently happening.
Yeah, I think we would interpret this not as, don't do these things. I think I interpret this
Said, in terms of adding the public, I think that's how it's being delivered to the public.
So trainings to the public and the employees will continue whether you pass this or not?
Is there any other discussion? Okay, Counselor Taub, you're up next. Is that a no? You're first.
So, yes.
Walker?
I'm so sorry. We are voting on removing the pieces in red.
That's correct.
No.
Counselor DeAngelis?
To provide, it would be to provide training to the town council with, with the understanding that the training for employees and members of the public would be ongoing.
Yes. So you're an aye. Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
Atte?
Aye.
Greasimer?
Aye.
Hanke?
Aye.
Hegner?
Aye.
Lord?
Nay.
Rooney?
Nay. Nay.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shane?
Abstain.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Okay, three, six, we have nine, nine, three with one abstention. So it passes. It's 7:56, so I'm thinking if we can wrap this page up, and then we'll take a break and then get back to the rest. Counselor Hanke?
I move to delete the alternative, identify financially support and coordinate programming for youth empowerment while determining opportunities for a youth empowerment center.
Is there a second? Do you want to speak to your motion? Okay. I think it's self-explanatory. That's fine. Counselor Rooney?
Yeah, I think, well, let's talk about the alternative a minute. So it says financially support and coordinate programming while determining opportunities. It means that let's keep going on these things while you actually talk about opportunities for the youth empowerment center. The, the main article or the original article says, identify, promote, and coordinate to determine. I don't know that you need to be running programs in order to determine the level of need. So I thought that the word while determining made more sense. And also adding the, the phrase financially support. I think Kathy Shane had mentioned the morning movement program. They need financial support in order to continue their work. Let's not just talk about it, let's actually direct money to it.
Okay. Counselor Atte?
I'm in favor of the alternative. I prefer the language of the alternative.
Counselor Walker?
I also prefer the language of the alternative. I just, I don't think we need to determine the need. I think we have to look for what opportunities exist.
Counselor Lord?
I, a third, supporting the alternative. I think the financial support is an important component that is not in the original. Thank you.
Counselor Ryan?
We've just heard about the budget and the bad news about health insurance. And so again, I guess the question, as it was earlier with the seniors center, is where is the money coming from?
Counselor Devlin Gauthier?
I think, I see the, the words determine need as being the same as finding opportunities. I think determining what the need is, is, is looking for those opportunities. And I am extremely concerned with the phrasing financially support as part of a goal in the town managers, in the alternative language, excuse me.
Counselor Taub?
I, I, I think we can spend a lot of time determining the need. I mean, there is a need for, for programming for youth. And I think if we have to, just like with the senior center and with the morning movement, maybe money has to be, and then we'll just look at where money has to be taken from. But to me, this would be a priority. And I think that we, until we have a brick and mortar center, we need to be providing programming, and I think it's pretty clear there's a need. I would support the alternative.
Counselor Hanke?
To me, determining a level of need for a building and a dedicated building is different than determining opportunities for a dedicated building. Youth empowerment center would be a building, not just a subset of a recreation department. And frankly, we don't have the money for a building. I'm just going to come out and say it. We don't have the money. Not if we want to build a DPW, not if we want to build a fire station. We don't have the money. And then we don't really have the money for whatever level of financial support is looking at that. That, to me, is operating financial support, not capital financial support. If you're looking to support programming like morning movement, that's, they have a boss. It's the operating side. So if people want the alternative, I want to hear what you're cutting, what you're willing to cut at this point, including on the capital side, to find a youth empowerment center. That's not to say there isn't a need for programming, but that's different than a building. I support the original.
Counselor Rooney?
The financially support is a direct nod to the ARPA funds. And there is, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the program support that does come from the town now has tapped into ARPA. This is to identify and, and what's the, what's the congressional term earmark? Some of that ARPA, as it goes back into the pot, this is where I would like to see it go. And I agree, we're a long way from a, a bricks and mortar. So while we're talking about that, let's make sure that the programming itself continues. I support the alternative.
Thank you, Counselor Taub. Did you want to say something first?
Hello? Yeah, okay. So I just wanted to say that morning movement is currently supported through ARPA grant funding that, that is ending at the end of the school year. And I know that Ray is working hard to find alternative funding sources and is fully dedicated to working on continuing that program because it's something that he believes in, as do many of us here, right? So the other thing is that currently, the way that the ARPA money was structured, it's being operated by the school, so we will have to take that back in order to continue supporting it. And I just want to say that because December 31st has come and gone, and our contract with the school goes through the end of the school year and then ends, there, you can't be, there's no more ARPA money available after, you know, May, when, when the school gets out. Like it's, we've, we've reached that deadline, and there is no contract in place after that for that particular funding source. We have to find alternatives.
Counselor Rooney, I think I already called on you. Counselor Taub?
So doesn't morning movement come through the Department of Recreation?
I believe that the, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm new to this one. So it started with the Department of Recreation, but in order to continue the ARPA funding with it, they had always done that with some, with partnership with other departments, including the school department. And I believe that a few other town departments assist in the support of the, you know, staffing of that. They transferred the operations to the school department so that we could do a contract for ARPA funds. That was sort of how we closed the loop on the contract. So Ray and the Recreation Department are still very involved and more immediate, but technically it operates out of this pool at this, until the end of the year.
When, so next year or for the next year's budget, it could come through the Department of, our Department of Recreation?
It, it could, but there is no, there is no funding, you know, for it. And that's why Ray is working on how to make that work. But, but you have, you have a few months to figure it out. But, but the unfortunate part is that ARPA funding is now over.
What I did want to say is I, I see this as a way to provide programming, know, until we had, until if and when we might have a youth center, realizing that that's, we have other capital projects that will come before that. But we need to provide the programming in the interim.
Counselor Walker?
Yeah, I think considering all of those things, it makes me feel even more strongly in favor of the alternative language. And that I think the morning movement was being used as an example and isn't, and in my opinion, shouldn't be the only youth empowerment programming. And so it also makes me wonder about the $500,000 that was set aside from ARPA for the feasibility study and whether that feasibility study is happening or whether that is what we were thinking would be applicable to this specific goal. But I would love to see that $500,000, if it's not already used, be shifted from a feasibility study to the financially supporting and coordinating the program, programming for the youth empowerment while determining opportunities for youth empowerment center.
Melissa, did you want to add something?
So again, the $500,000 because of the December 31st deadline is now, like, there's no more ARPA money available to contract or to spend. Like it's, it's unless, unless it was under contract as of December 31st, ARPA money is not, no longer available. As for the $500,000 that was originally allocated, you know, we, I know that a study was done, that study was it was tapered, you know, it was altered to fit the needs of the to, to fit the needs of the committee or the group, of the internal group that was working on it. And there was a portion of the original study done to identify other programming in the community. And there is a map available listing those, those activities that are available for, for, that were deemed accessible for youth empowerment.
Can I jump in, Melissa? So, so we will, we will be presenting to the council the sort of update on the ARPA funding, where, where it was allocated, what's been done so far, and then what's available for future appropriation. Because the money that, when Melissa says the money went away, it didn't go away. It was, it'll, it'll fall to free cash. So it'll be money that's available for appropriation. So that'll be a decision point for the council at that point in time.
Counselor DeAngelis?
I just, I just want to clarify a couple of things. The morning movement program was developed by kids who were coming to the school. Make it short. You should say that to some of the other folks.
I will.
Okay, so, but that's critical because that empowered those kids. The other thing is, we keep talking about morning movement, the, there was RISE programming. There has been other programming for middle and high school students also. What is critical is promoting and coordinating and funding whenever we can the actual programming. The building is less important.
Thank you. Counselor Rooney?
Yes, so I just heard what I think I wanted to hear, and that is, we, we took back ARPA, we put it in our free cash. That's what we're targeting here, just to be very clear. Myself and those others who have spoken support utilizing some of that money, be creative in figuring out how to do it. But these are the kinds of programs that we think are important to support.
Counselor Lord?
Yeah, and connecting with what Paul and Pam said, I understood that we didn't, there was uncertainty about the, the change in leadership at the government level, that it might be clawed back, and that's why we folded it into free cash. And so I understood that that would still be available the remainder for our youth programming. Thank you.
Counselor Shane?
I strongly support it as proposed. I, I think we have made great strides in coordinating and promoting innovative programs, and that's what we need to continue.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands, so we'll move to a vote. Counselor Walker, you're first up this time. And so this vote would be to delete the alternative here.
No.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Aye.
Counselor Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
Atte?
No.
Greasimer?
Aye.
Hanke?
Aye.
Hegner?
No.
Lord?
Nay.
Rooney?
No.
Ryan? Shane?
Yes.
Steinberg?
No.
Taub?
No.
Six to seven, so that fails. It sounds to me that the council has determined that they prefer the alternative. I take that I take that as consensus without a vote. Are there objections to that? Counselor Grissimer? With no objections, we'll take a recess for 10 minutes and come back at 8:21. Thank you. There's no structure. Exactly. It's gone. And, well, that's, well, that's my, that's, but here's the problem. Of course, that at least costs having revenue. This program doesn't. So, 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 but are we making the right, are we making the right programming choices for the community? Right? Because it's, if it does, right, then, but if we, if we say, okay, we're not going to stop the goal and we're going to, you know, give that a, right? And just kind of let it go there. And then we can use those resources to do something more programmatic in the rec department. I don't think there's a loss. Do, do a different program. That, that, it's not the assessment. Not, it's not the assessment. It's the, like, there's, that map's wrong. It should, it should be in that list though, too. I mean, I'm not, right? Right? Did you see my, my letter to Leverett when she was very, it's just pretty basic. And I sent it to you and then I attached all of their agreements with a 5%. I sent it along as long as you guys say, yeah, you can say it, or ooh, don't say it that way. Good. The second quarter report, because there's a million dollars, it's going to be doing money for the general fund revenue to be there. Like, you know, as I'm doing the analysis, I'm like, I said, Holly, I know, I'm like, I think this is misposted. I noticed too, like, we're posting something every quarter for short-term rentals, but it's not, right, it's not local option tax. We're posting it to impact fees. And I, I wonder if that's not misquoted. You know, like if we, if it really is, I, I, it seems weird that we get a quarterly impact. Unless, I just don't, I don't understand what the, what the thing is. All right, make your way back to your seats, please. It'll be on the agenda for Monday, so we'll have a, we'll have a moment to clean it up. And then you'll see it Monday. And it should be what we're hoping for is by the end of the night, we're ready to vote on Monday. Counselor Walker, are you back with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Athena.
Thank you. Shout out to Angela for feeding us. Okay, we're moving on to our next page here. Tilt medium. Counselor Ete?
Before we move on, I was wondering, since declared isn't an appetite financially or otherwise for a brick and mortar empowerment center, I was wondering if we could take that out. So I'd like to make a motion to identify financially support and coordinate programming for youth empowerment.
Is this, is this what you're suggesting, to remove this part that I've struck?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, looking for discussion on this change. Counselor Walker?
While I do recognize that there would be a financial component to a brick and mortar center, that's not necessarily what this is getting to, in my opinion, because we're keeping the identify and financially support portion, which is the financial aspect of it. But the part that's being proposed here to be taken out in red is determining opportunities for a youth empowerment center. And I think that that's significantly important because it doesn't require us to spend any money. It actually just requires us to look into opportunities. And again, that can result in, we don't have any, there's nothing we can find. But I think it's something really important for us to be looking into, whether or not we have the financial ability to build or purchase or what have you, a center.
Thank you. Counselor Grissimer?
Excuse me. This brings me to what I was going to say earlier. Youth empowerment happens in every amazing location that youth gather to do anything. So when my son, who has a disability, was on the high school tennis team, he wasn't at a center, but it was most empowering. And so no matter what we do, we will never build a center large enough to empower all of the youth in our community. Programming is another thing. And that's where we need to put our money.
Are there any other comments? Moving to a vote, Counselor De, I'm sorry, Counselor Hankey?
That will be short. Even exploring costs money because it costs time of staff who are already overworked. So I will support removing this.
Okay. Counselor DeAngelis, you're first.
Aye.
Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
Ete?
Aye.
Grissimer?
Aye.
Hankey?
Aye.
Hegner?
Aye.
Lord?
Nay.
Rooney?
No.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shane?
Yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
No.
Walker?
No.
Nine to four, the motion passes. Are we ready to move on to tilt medium? Okay. Looking for discussion, motions. Counselor Hankey?
So we're starting to get into the ones where we should be moving to delete a lot. I'm just going to say that. We're starting to get where we should be moving to delete these because we're trying to narrow down the action items to a reasonable amount for the manager to focus on. And now we're in the tilting medium, possibly because they had more lows than medium, well, about the same lows and mediums, or maybe there were some highs in there, I don't know. But given some of the comments here, I am going to move to delete the first, well, I'm going to move to delete, we'll, we'll just do one at a time, the update, the Amherst Bicycle and Pedestrian Network Plan with a goal of council adoption in 2025.
Second.
Sorry. Counselor Hankey, would you like to speak to that?
It's based on the manager's comments.
Okay. Looking for discussion on this motion. Devlin Gauthier?
I'd like to ask the town manager what makes this unlikely in 2025 and what would make it more likely in future years?
Please.
To update the bike and ped plan, we would have put, put together a committee. We'd have to have someone to staff the committee. And then we'd have to do the actual, we either have to get a grant or get funding to actually do the work of updating it. So we are in the process of doing the housing production plan update right now. And I, on the housing trust, I see the amount of time and effort. We have a staff person who's really dedicated to this. We don't have a person for that. That being said, we do know that this is up for review. And it should be done, but I just don't think we can accomplish it in this fiscal year.
Is there, sorry, if I can add a follow up?
Calendar year, sorry.
Is there a timeline of which of these kind of plans, for lack of a better term? So housing production, bicycle and ped, all of those? Kind of what should happen where, so that we might be able to stagger them intelligently in the future?
I, I don't have a schedule like that, but it makes sense. I mean, the, the charter requires certain updates on master plan, things like that. But on the other plans, I can pull something like that together, actually. It'd be a good thing for us to do.
Counselor Ryan?
I'll be sorry to see this one go. I understand that it makes these demands on staff, but this has been going on for a number of years now. And it looks like it's going to stay that way for a long time. So if it does go, which looks like it might, I will just see what I can do myself and find out what can be done outside of staff time to try and make this move forward. It's something that should be done, it should have been done a couple of years ago. It's, and it looks like it's going to be delayed yet more. So I guess I just say I'm disappointed.
Counselor Shane?
Paul, you said you have to form a committee. And I never understand, we have a committee called TAC. And it seems like they do work on these things and then it goes into a file cabinet rather than becomes an action plan. So why is this not something that could be assigned to TAC? Is my first question, you know, and get the right people on TAC if there are a couple vacancies or, and if we said 2026. But you know, my issue is, I'll go back to one where George and I were up at sides of this, but we widened a path up by me. When the opposite, the widen one sidewalk by the other side is almost unwalkable and needs to be repaired. And so I, I just don't understand if we're really looking at walking and biking, why we don't take a more holistic look at roads rather than just say, we used to have a plan and this is what we're going to do. So that's, I just, I'm not understanding why we don't already have a committee that could be assign this and talk about what's possible.
Sure, so there's a proposal before the council to eliminate TAC. So until the council decides if it wants to keep TAC or not, I don't think we should be assigning new things to TAC. I mean, you could say, we want to keep TAC, that's a different, I'm not sure where the council is on that at this point in time. And secondly, I think, you know, what the, the goal is to update the bike and ped plan this calendar year, and it won't happen in 11 months, I can guarantee it. This is not an accomplishable goal unless we really,
Yeah, so, so it's 2025 is the problem.
If I may finish, unless we dedicate enormous amount of staff time and funding to accomplish it.
Counselor Devlin Gauthier?
Given the amount of time that other plans, thinking about the recreation Given the amount of time that other plans, thinking about the recreation and open space plan, all, like, these are very in-depth plans. I can absolutely see how this wouldn't be doable in a calendar year. Could we, and I'm, I'm not proposing an alternate motion at this time because a motion's been made and seconded, but in your mind, is there a way to adjust this to reflect that we know it's a multi, probably a multi-year process? And if this motion should fail to delete it, instead propose alternative language to talk about beginning the process, what, once there is an appropriate committee to assign it to or commission to assign it to, would that be, in your mind, more feasible versus saying, update it this year? Would it say like, I mean, it's, it's a fluffy language, so I don't even like saying it, but begin the process of updating or create a timeline for updating or something like that? Would that be more feasible, given the time and staffing that we have?
Yeah, a timeline would certainly be achievable, but I think that it's a serious consideration. I think that's what I took away from your previous comment, is to what are the timelines for these various plans?
Is there any other discussion on this motion? Counselor-
Can I ask, can I ask for clarification? Was, was that an amendment rec, um, being proposed from Anna?
No, it was not. There is a motion on the table that I'm not trying to amend right now. I was just asking what would be possible, should this motion fail?
Okay. Counselor Devlin Gothier, you're actually up first for the vote.
No.
Ete.
No.
Griesmer.
Yes.
Hanke.
Aye.
Hegner.
Yes.
Lord.
Nay.
Rooney.
No.
Ryan.
No.
Shane.
No.
Steinberg.
No.
Taub.
No.
Walker.
No.
DeAngelis.
No.
It's three to 10, that motion fails. Devlin Gothier.
Um, I'd like, I'd like to throw something on the floor, and then I'd like to make an amendment, sorry.
You'd like to, I'm sorry?
Uh, I'd like to, sorry, I was dropping things, propose an amendment.
Okay.
Uh, I would like to remove the word update and write in the words, create a timeline for up, updating? Does that make sense?
And then, did you want to take out these words at the end with the goal of council adoption?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Is there a second?
Rooney.
Is there discussion? Okay, let's vote. Ete.
Aye.
Griesmer.
Aye.
Hanke.
Aye.
Hegner.
Aye.
Lord.
Aye.
Rooney.
Yes.
Ryan.
Aye.
Shane.
Yes.
Steinberg.
Yes.
Taub.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
DeAngelis.
Aye.
Devlin Gothier.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, floor's open. Counselor Hanke.
Um, I move to delete website improvements.
Ryan, second.
Discussion, oh, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, um, this is so vague that I don't know what we're even going after with the phrase website improvements. Is it a full redo? Is it just the minor improvements that are done every year? What, what is it? And we, unless it gets more specific, I don't think it belongs here, but even if it does, I just don't think it's a high priority compared to other things. I mean, we're here to figure out what the highest priorities for our manager and staff to spend time on, and this is not one of them.
Counselor Rooney.
I would hate to disagree, but I'm gonna disagree. We've had several conversations, even tonight, that finding information, pointing, you know, we have, who, who manages what, where do you find their information? There are several action items that are essentially related to this. Um, I don't think we need to be so specific to say, you know, we think that, we think the image of the town hall is too large on the main page, so there's no room for information. I don't want to go to that level of detail. I would say, I like having a directive to get to work on the website and make it more user-friendly and make it easier to find information. So keeping it in here keeps it on the radar. That would be my goal, thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
So language to that effect would be helpful. As it's written, it is, I have no idea what this means. I mean, any website improvement, even the smallest one, maybe correcting an error or fixing a broken link, Paul would have achieved the goal. So it's, it's impossible to evaluate him, it's not clear to what it's saying. I suppose we could wordsmith it, and Pam has already suggested maybe some wording that I could at least begin to understand what's being asked, but as it stands, it's, it's doesn't, it's impossible to understand what it's asking or to evaluate it. And again, I would suggest that while it's a legitimate concern, bring it to TSO, we do outreach, we can work on it.
Well, it sounds like we should leave it in so we can easy win. Counselor Taub.
So if it gets referred to TSO, and then we come back to the council and refer it, is that what you're saying, then, then the council would, would have to be next year's town manager goal?
Yeah.
I mean, I think improving, and maybe that's something that's already, will be done, that the communications director, I don't know if she always worked on the website, but I think improving the search function, just so you can put in keywords and find it. I, I, I find that challenging.
So we buy a package called Civic Plus, and some of the limitations are in that package, there's nothing you can do about it. And it's, and the search function is pretty miserable, from my experience as well. Many cities and towns use Civic Plus, and so you're in, when we pay a lot of money for use of Civic Plus, but then you're allowed certain updates, and some of them are just cosmetic, like changing the imagery and things like that, or changing the tiles and how they're aligned. If you want to do a major, it's, it's a really big undertaking, it's just, it's not just the communications manager, but it's also the IT department that would be involved with this.
So in our preliminary conversations about this with the communications manager and IT, we had talked about making some of those cosmetic changes because there was money in the budget for FY25 for website improvements, but a, a evaluation of Civic Plus, and if we wanted to look at other options for our website, that would be evaluated in FY26 with a potential request for capital and FY27. So it's, um, for a major overhaul of our website and potential change from Civic Plus to something else, we would evaluate those options in the coming year and then propose something afterwards. But Sam's can't, Sam isn't here to speak to her work, but she is continually working on the website and making improvements to the website. She hears feedback from folks about how things are found and where people look for things. She's able to drill down and to see what, what are the most common search terms and try and make the things that are most commonly searched for more visible on the website, so you don't have to search, it's just, you know, in a more logical place. So that's an ongoing effort by our communications manager.
We can do with the current system, Civic Plus.
Uh, Counselor Hegner.
Yeah. So this has already been discussed, I think, your explanation of what's going on. I, I had suggested an alternative wording to improve keyword search engine for town websites to facilitate searches for critical documents, but I, it sounds like you're already doing that.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with removing this.
Okay, if there's no other, I don't see any other hands, so Counselor Ete, you are first for the and it's to delete website improvements.
Aye.
Griesmer.
Aye.
Hanke.
Aye.
Hegner.
Aye.
Lord.
Aye.
Rooney.
No.
Ryan.
Aye.
Shane.
Yes.
Steinberg.
Yes.
Taub.
Yes, because we have to delete something.
Walker.
Yes.
DeAngelis.
Aye.
Devlin Gothier.
Aye.
It's 12 to 1, thank you. Floor's open. Counselor Taub.
I feel like we almost need a universal disclaimer, is when we vote, no, it's not because we don't think it's important, but we have to, we can't do everything.
We know.
That's my public statement.
Counselor Ryan.
So I would, item three, the alternative language to reduce zoning bylaws as they affect businesses that are possible in different districts in town, I move to delete. I'd like to delete that language, or I, yeah.
Second.
Just delete the alternative. Make it go away.
Uh, Counselor Shane, is your hand up for discussion on this?
Well, I'd like to speak to it if I may. But-
I don't think so.
It was my motion.
Go ahead, George.
At this hour, I can't tell anymore. I actually would like to delete the whole darn thing. So maybe that's where I'll end up, but at least the first sentence, I understand, and Paul's comments in the comments section makes it clear that this is something that, broadly speaking, will be coming to us through the planning department. So one could make the case that what we're saying to Paul and to staff is that we are concerned, would like him to spend time and, and effort on zoning bylaws to increase and support economic development in town. And he's telling us here that that is something that he expects will come to us from the planning department later in this year 2025. It's still very broad in general and lacks specificity, but the second, the alternative language, I don't even understand. So unless someone would like to delete the whole thing and has an argument for that, at the moment, I'm just willing to leave that language stand with Paul's comment, but I'd like to keep the original language.
Counselor Shane, is your hand up for this item?
Yes, and I'd also, Athena, you might have said it to us at the beginning of the night or in one of the emails, tilt medium as opposed to medium. Does that mean four people liked it?
It means that the most, the highest number of people rated it medium, but it was less than seven.
But it was-
So there was six or fewer rated it medium.
Six or fewer rated it medium, not high. So I'm wondering why we're focusing on all these tilt mediums, but I would say to get rid of this altogether, I'm, I'm counting up, and we're at 16 already, that we kept on the list, and I'm trying to keep the number small enough that we can look at it. So I don't mind George's change, but I had it on, I don't think we need it. So I don't know how I vote on it with a first vote to remove the alternative language, then vote again to get rid of it altogether.
Mm-hmm. So for this particular action item, it was three ranked it high, prioritized it high, five medium, three low, and two delete. So five was the highest number, so it went in tilt medium. Does that make-
And I think in some cases, people said delete on some of the tilt mediums, right?
Yes, in, in all the tilts, they were, they were scattered, but the five as medium was the highest, so that's where I put it. Counselor DeAngelis?
I'd like, shut up. I would like to- I would like to propose an alternative or a change to the motion and, and move that we delete the whole thing. Is that a friendly amendment? Thank you, I couldn't think-
Counselor Ryan is-
It's not very friendly. I think, again, my case here is that this is, we are sending a message to Paul, which I'm sure he, I will get anyway, is that we do want to support what the planning department is going to be doing in the coming year, we think, or hope, namely focused on economic development. So keeping it in makes that point, it allows us to evaluate him at the end of the year, and he said that it's something he's gonna do anyway, so taking it out completely seems counterproductive, at least in my initial thinking. So I appreciate the offer, but I'd like to have a vote on keeping the language as it is, with the argument that it sends Paul a message and gives us something to then evaluate him on at the end of the year.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Griesmer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hanke.
Aye.
Hegner.
Aye.
Lord.
Aye.
Rooney.
Yes.
Ryan.
Aye.
Shane.
Yes.
Steinberg.
Yes.
Taub.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
DeAngelis.
Aye.
Devlin Gothier.
Aye.
Ete.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Floor's open. Counselor Ryan.
So perhaps it's some help for my colleagues, I would like to make a motion about all the remaining items that are marked low or tilt low or tilt delete. And I would like to move that they all be deleted with the following exceptions.
Okay, can I request that we just start with the lows, one page at a time?
Why don't you let, I'm making a motion, which I believe I'm entitled to make. My reasoning is that in some cases-
Well, can you tell me what your motion is first?
I was about to issue, articulate the exceptions to my general motion when I was interrupted by my colleagues, which I believe is a violation of the rules of procedure, among other things. Am I not, that is correct, isn't it? Thank you. So I was going to list a couple of specific items that are either ongoing, or the manager has said can be done, or are in development with staff. There aren't many of them, in fact, according to my count, there are three of them. And what I was going to suggest is that all these items be deleted, with the exception of the B E S S, with the exception of the O E O E D Mass Downtown Initiative, and with the exception of incorporate, actually, no, that was it. The first one was the B E S S, which is, I'd like to keep that in, I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to keep that in because it's in development with staff, and I assume there's reasonable support, but maybe I'm wrong. I'd like to keep the E O E D in for the same reason, it's ongoing. And I think that's it. So it's just with those two exceptions, my motion is to delete everything else.
Second.
Pretty impressive. So discussion, I mean, again, you've heard me, I think, all of these, we're trying to heroically cut this down as much as possible, and my argument for the, keeping the three in, or the two, excuse me, in, is that they are in process and are doable.
Uh, Counselor Hanke.
So, I still gotta go through and clearly read all of these, but BES, we didn't put back in solar, we didn't put back in waste taller, I don't understand why we would keep BES of just the way it's even worded right now of BES. We made a decision not to list any of the bylaws in the one above, and now you're saying, let's list this one in particular, but not the other two that have already been referred and stuff, so that makes no sense to me. I think that would be a request for a friendly amendment to not include the BES in this exception.
Counselor Ryan.
Uh, just clarification, so it is in development with staff, so it's, it's gonna come to us.
It's, it's part of solar.
And it's, okay, fine, all right. So I'm happy to accept your friendly amendment.
Counselor Griesmer, are you okay with that?
As with BES.
Lynn? You were the second, are you okay with it?
I need to clarify, are you saying that BES will be included in the solar bylaw?
It has a piece of it in it because it needs to, and then, well, you two should speak to this. No, it's potential, it can be a whole freestanding one, but it also needs to be part of solar.
The staff has already worked on a freestanding one that we're going to begin looking at in CRC, and, but we're assuming that we're gonna get the solar bylaw passed first, and so there are elements, like very critical elements about BES and the solar bylaw, but those would be included in a final BES and with some additional-
So there will be a separate BES bylaw in addition to a-
Yes. Yes.
So is that all right with you, Counselor Griesmer, if this is a friendly amendment to remove best as well?
No.
Okay, so that, that remains. Counselor Hankey, is that all? Or did you have a comment?
I guess then I'm making a motion on the motion to remove best from the motion, which means, because the motion, if I understand it, was move to delete all low, tilt low, or tilt delete except best and E O E D. And so I'm moving to remove the word best and from that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, Hegner.
Okay, so now the conversation, discussion on adding essentially this to the list of removals, the list to be deleted. So George has proposed to delete, you know, everything on these three pages except best and E O E D. Mandy has amended that motion to include best among all of the deletions. So first you would vote to add best to the list of deletions, and then you vote to delete all of those things. Does that make sense? Okay, there are hands up, if you had your hand up for something else, please take it down. Devlin Gothier?
I wanted to confirm something. Did we officially decide that the measures that are referred to committee required by law and in progress will not be a part of the goals? Did we take a vote on that?
Those are not deleted, and those were not proposed to be deleted.
Right, so those are.
We haven't addressed those yet.
In there, so to me, it doesn't make sense then to delete one even because it's ongoing if we haven't discussed whether or not the other ongoing projects will be deleted. And I know that that's a catch 22, but that's, we're in it. So I worry about deleting something because we say it's going to happen anyway when we haven't decided if that's what we're going to do for all of the other things that are already happening. And then I think I need to wait for my second question.
Yeah, we're just looking at best right now. Yep, Counselor Steinberg?
Yeah, I think that the thing that I wonder about all the time with best is that many things, the standard practice is that the council refers to a committee, the development of something, solar bylaw. We did not ever vote to ask a committee to do a battery storage, energy storage bylaw. And so it was sort of a decision of a committee to take it on as opposed to a decision of the council. So I just, first of all, want to note that this is the first time we've ever had a discussion of any sort in the council about whether that is something that is a priority, that it is just sort of assumed by a committee to make it a priority. It's a, so it's a part of it, I'm bothered by the process that we got into. And I think that this is a valuable discussion because it is the opportunity to actually decide whether we as a council think that the committee ought to be even working on the subject. And having said that, I think that at this point, I would probably be inclined to say yes, but I would like to hear discussion.
Dave, did you want to add anything?
So I just wanted to note that this is a staff initiative, not a council initiative that, and if you want to make it a council initiative as well, that's fine. But, you know, zoning bylaws can come to the council in many different, from many different sources. One of the sources is staff, and I believe this is, came out of discussions in the committee, but it's being developed by staff. So it doesn't, we don't require the council to say, yes, you can work on something. We can do that on our own professional initiatives. So I think that's what, this has caught up. The only thing that's different about this one is that the council had previously approved the solar bylaw and the waste taller by law or request earlier. But this could come, this will come to you one way or the other.
If I could.
Yes, please.
So yeah, just, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Not sure this mic is on. So everything Paul said, so I think what I'd like to say is when we started the solar bylaw some time ago, battery energy storage was discussed in previous committees that then brought that to the council and eventually to the referral to the CRC. In those years that have passed, as we've been working on these issues, battery energy storage has become the norm in these projects. So I think the feedback we got from the CRC and the community was it's critically important to work on best as soon as we are done the solar bylaw. And the solar bylaw does have elements referring to best. So they, it makes perfect sense, one to follow the other. And I think that's kind of where we are. And as Paul said, staff could, could bring this best to the council at some point in the coming months. I hope that was clear.
George, I think you've already spoken on this one, have you? Did you already speak on best?
Can't speak again?
Well, I would just go to Lynn first.
That's fine.
Because she hasn't. Counselor Griesmer?
I believe just as we actually wed two other bylaws when we did rental registration and the other one, which is.
Nuisance property?
Nuisance bylaw. These two go hand in hand. And being in District Two, where this is one of the biggest issues going on, I cannot see anything but supporting it. Thank you.
Counselor Hankey, have you spoken on this?
Sort of, not really. I mean, I made a motion that we're talking about. So I've got, it's tough. I think the town needs a battery energy storage bylaw more than it needs a solar energy bylaw. Yet this language, because this was pulled out of that other action item, I'm not even sure what, where it would go, if it would just be a standalone, just say best versus like add it in. So I have trouble thinking about it on its own because it wasn't really ever on its own, except when we had to rank these. But my other bigger concern with this and the solar energy one, and I know one has been referred and the other one has not really been referred, but is included in the solar energy, or at least there was a section in there for CRC to discuss, is there's a new state law. And I worry in prioritizing both solar and best before the regulations on the state law are out, that we are going to spend a lot of staff time doing something that then will need completely redone. Staff spent some time with ADU modifications before the regulations came out. And then the regulations came out, and much of the modifications that staff and the planning board had spoken on and spent time on need to be thrown out because they violate and are in conflict with the regulations that were adopted. I don't want us to spend a lot of staff time on something that will then need completely redone again in six or seven months because of the regulations that come out, whatever those regulations look like. So I struggle with when in the year the time is being spent on this, which is why I'm more for deleting them both, because I don't want to spend the time before those regulations are out. So maybe I need to hear from staff about when the time will be spent on these because your time's valuable and I don't want to see what happened with ADU happen again.
Want to speak on that, Dave?
Is we will spend time on this. Well, let me back up. We are in the process of hiring a new planning director. We have some, some newer staff on board. So our plates are quite full right now. And until we bring on, until Paul appoints a new planning director and bring that person on and acclimate them and whatnot, we are operating at less than, you know, 100%. But I'm optimistic about that process and that will move forward. I think to some degree, how much staff time we spend on, on a couple of these, like additional time on the solar bylaw, like on ADUs, will depend on the CRC and the council. Because we are responsive to you, we staff liaison to CRC and to the council as needed. So to some degree, the staff requirement or the staff resources are dependent on how quickly with staff support you all can move through these. We just finished or wrapped up one recently that will be recommended to the council. And so I think next is solar bylaw and to Counselor Hankey's comments about ADU, I think that is a high priority as well. I can't really speak with any detail to what may happen at the state level and that, that work. I do know that the best draft is in fairly good shape. Kudos to Chris Brestrop and Stephanie Chicorello. So I think it's more kind of waiting there for the right time to bring to CRC. And, and we can have those discussions about the state process and when it makes sense. So that's the best answer I can give tonight, I think.
Counselor Ryan?
So just, so I don't lose track of where we're at. Mandy's amendment is to add, right, best to the list of action items that are to be deleted.
Correct.
And given what I'm hearing, I'm going to support that. I'm going to vote yes on that. This is in development, as we just heard. It's referenced in a number of places in our document. The language as it stands is, would have to be wordsmithed. And so I think we should add this one so that, yes.
Okay, Counselor Rooney?
Can I amend an amendment? I was going to suggest that the battery storage go to the back page, which is ongoing measures. And that, so yes, it would be cut from this list of low priorities, but I'm going to support it as being important and ongoing and add it to the back page.
I don't think there was an intention for things to be left in this list the way it is because the original list from GOL was organized by areas, goal areas. So they'll be put back into the goal areas before the council votes them on Monday. So it's not going to stay in this. Does that make sense?
Okay. Kathy Shane? Counselor Shane?
I totally disagree with Mandy's rationale why it shouldn't be there, which was we shouldn't act until the state acts because the state is going to act. We, the town of Amherst, have already been a model for a few things like cohousing, where the state changed the way things happen. States, the state looks at municipalities, they've done so being in the lead and then having to come back and tweak it, if anything, all the towns that moved on ADUs is why the state even moved more on them. But what, what I don't completely understand is if it's already in the works and it's part of what we would call climate action, why it's not just subsumed under that original climate. So I don't see that it has to be separate. But if it needs to have, Lynn had asked, couldn't we put including dot, 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 to just have the words sit somewhere? Otherwise, we won't even capture the words if we can't do what Pam has asked. So back to Lynn's, including the list where best was on the list. So, so George also picked out the other one to keep on the list. And if we keep it on the list, we need to spell out E O E D. So any normal person in town might know what we're talking about.
Okay. Any other comments? Counselor Taub?
Could we decide to keep that list? I mean, nothing says it can't be there if we.
Keep what list?
Of ongoing, this back page where we've listed.
It's not, it's not in the list of things to be deleted that George proposed.
Right, you're saying it's not really part of what our goals, the format of the goals that we vote on at the council meeting next Monday?
They'll be put back into that format, yeah.
They will be, okay.
They'll be incorporated back into the format that GOL had been posted.
Okay, thank you, I thought you were saying it was, yeah.
Unless we have, unless that's part of the discussion tonight and the council decides to delete or edit those. Any other comments on best? Counselor Hankey, you're first.
Aye.
The vote is to add best to the list to be deleted. Hegner?
Aye.
Lord?
Aye.
Rooney?
No.
Brian?
Aye.
Shane?
I'm sorry, just can you tell me, what am I voting? If I vote yes, what happens?
If you vote yes, then the group that George proposed to be deleted, best will be included in that group.
It's included in the deletion, no.
Steinberg?
No.
Taub?
No.
Walker?
No.
DeAngelis?
No.
Devlin Gothier?
No.
Ette?
Yes.
Griesmer?
No.
Five to eight, the motion fails, so that is not included. So the motion that's on the floor at this point is George's proposal, Counselor Ryan's proposal to delete the low, tilt low, and tilt delete items. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Devlin Gothier?
It's to delete everything but those two things.
Correct.
Okay.
Me? Yeah, okay. Under tilt low was incorporate anti-racism and anti-discrimination training into onboarding processes. And this is something that the town manager indicated could be done in 2025. I would figure out, I'll figure out how to make a motion on a motion on a motion on a motion in a second. But given that the town manager identified this as something that could be done, given that we have in the past really been trying to focus our efforts around anti-discrimination and anti-racism training, to be specific, this was something, this arose out of prior goals that were, you know, ensure an anti-racist culture. And then we drilled down into how do we do that? And it was, you know, one way to try to get at that is by offering trainings. And then we thought about how to target that and make it a bit more specific. And that's how we landed on the onboarding processes. So I would like to, sorry, I'd like to make a motion to remove incorporate anti-racism and anti-discrimination training into onboarding processes from the list of proposed deletions.
Second.
And I've said enough about it, so I'm done speaking to my motion.
Comments on that motion to remove this one from the list of deletions? Pat, is your comment on this? Counselor DeAngelis, please go ahead.
I would definitely like to keep this. And it becomes a simple thing to add to onboarding process. And it's critical that it, that the town council look at itself as our own, about racial equity issues. It's important that new employees do that. And I think that there is enough set up with employees, et cetera, already that it could be easily incorporated into an onboarding process.
Counselor Ryan?
So when I made my initial motion, I actually was going to include this, and then I didn't. And that suggests my own sort of back and forth, which is my problem. I was struck by two things. One is positive that Paul thinks this can be done. It does seem appropriate, but the other factor was, of course, it was tilt low. So it seemed like it was not rated that highly by a good number of my colleagues. So maybe the way to settle that is simply to go ahead and have a vote. And at this point, I would probably actually vote to remove it. Not yes, from the list of deletions.
Counselor DeAngelis? You raised your hand.
Yes, I'd like to add, because. Yes, I'd like to add, because I was looking at it just at anti-racism. I looked at, I'm a lesbian. I'm a target now because of who's in power in the federal government. I have been treated badly as a lesbian when it's been known, and I've been treated well. And it, those kinds of anti-discrimination things are critical for onboarding. We have trans people here, we have all kinds of people in our community, including homeless people that need to be respected. And that, so I think this is a critically important onboarding process, and we should be keeping this goal.
Okay. Counselor Walker.
I just want to agree with Pat that I think that this is critically important.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, we're going to move to a vote. Counselor Hegner.
Aye.
Lord.
Aye.
Rooney.
Yes.
Ryan.
Aye.
Shane.
Yes.
Steinberg.
Yes.
Taub.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
DeAngelis.
Aye.
Devlin Gothea.
Aye.
Ette.
Aye.
Grissimer.
Aye.
Hanke.
Aye.
It's unanimous. So now the motion that's on the floor is George's motion minus.
E O E D and incorporate anti-racism and anti-discrimination training and battery, battery B E S S. Those three.
Okay.
That's what I originally had.
Is there further discussion? Counselor Ette.
So had related to develop a plan to increase access to medical care and immunizations. Notes state ongoing at Health Department, Mosanti Center. My question is, what exactly is ongoing? Is it that there's a plan that's ongoing? Or is it that there is already access to medical care and immunizations? And so there doesn't need to be anything to increase?
So I think I sent something to you, to the council today about the immunization clinics and that are happening tomorrow by the Department, by the Board of Health or the Public Health Department and by the Mosanti Center. So they regularly go offer, they do offer immunizations and vaccines to people. And when, you know, we also have a store of vaccines for students who might have come into town, you know, on short notice and need vaccines in order to get into, be allowed to enter the school. So we also assist with that, which we've done fairly recently as well.
And anyone can walk into the Mosanti Center. Counselor Shane.
I feel like I'm just a counter here, but we're at 22, which is a nice number. No, with the three we just added, yeah.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay. So the motion is to delete everything from tilt-low, delete and low shown in red, strike through. Counselor Lord. How do you vote?
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Shane.
Yes.
Steinberg.
Yes.
Taub.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
DeAngelis.
Aye.
Devlin Gothea.
Aye.
Ette.
Aye.
Grissimer.
Aye.
Hanke.
Aye.
And Hegner.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. So, George, I see your hand up.
So are we moving on to no consensus?
Unless there's discussion about changing the language here, which I was just trying to think about.
Yeah, with best, the language is not appropriate.
So I would just add, support the development of the battery energy storage bylaw.
Yes, that would be.
Sounds good.
That would be fine.
Any objections? Okay. Counselor Ryan, your hand is up.
If we're ready to go on to the no consensus items.
Go ahead.
My motion would be, I'd like to make a motion, motion would be to delete these one, two, three, four, five items since, well, I'll get to the argument, but I'd like to make that motion.
Delete all?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. George, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, if I may briefly, as you can see here, we do have the actual counts. And you can see that these have not come even close to any sort of consistency and any sort of high rating. And rather than spending hours debating, some of these are, you know, I personally think number two is something I would very much like to see happen. And I'm deeply disappointed that this council, year after year, runs away from it. But it's clear that the, well, it seems pretty clear that the votes aren't there. And that seems to be true for all the other items as well. So no matter how you may feel about them individually, and as I said, that item two is one I care a lot about, I don't see that we're going to accomplish anything tonight. And I would suggest that we delete them all and that I and others who care about some of these just have more work to do in the coming year.
Counselor Hanke.
I will not vote for this motion. There is one in particular that is on here. Well, first of all, we just added three low and lean tilt-low to the goals, and we've got some here that have five high priority votes on here. Five high priority. They have five low, but five high priority. That's more than any of the three we just kept in the goals. If we delete all of these, the goals have no housing goals at all. I believe every single one of us on this council have said they support increasing affordable and attainable housing in town. And yet we would not have a single goal for the manager that focused on increasing housing affordability, housing attainability, housing accessibility in this town in a situation and a climate where the entire state is aiming to increase housing. It would be a travesty if this council does not adopt for the manager as an action item at least something related to increasing housing attainability or affordability or accessibility in this town. That might not mean it's one of these exactly as written, but we need to do something or it's going to be a travesty.
I'd have to look. Counselor, no, no, they didn't remove that one. Counselor Devlin Gothea.
Respectfully.
I'm sorry. Counselor Hanke, that wasn't a motion, was it? Okay. Counselor Devlin Gothea, please go ahead.
Respectfully, second to everything Counselor Hanke just said, we shouldn't mass delete things that we're spread this far out on. I want us to vote each one. I think a low isn't a no. Some of us ran out of cookies. And we should all have to put up and vote. We need to explain where we are and explain why, if we are voting to delete this from a priority. So no, I will not support this motion.
Okay. I just want to point out that a no vote will allow the council to to discuss each of these. So if there is discussion on each of these, I think the the conversation here is delete them all. And if there's a no vote, then you'll discuss them.
I understand. That's why I'm saying I will not support the motion to delete all of them.
I'm making that because I see a lot of hands up. Counselor Shane.
Early in, whenever we finally, whenever we got the moving from concepts to specifics on actions from GOL, I said that we have things on this list that we don't agree on as a council and making them a manager goal when we haven't had a long discussion and reached agreement on them doesn't make any sense to me. And that's what I see in this list. And Mandy's now saying, maybe we can find some wording somewhere that we could all agree on. That's the longer discussion I want to have. This is not the time to do this. It's just not the time. I mean, if if we want a long discussion, in our rules, we've set up the ability to have a working session. Like, what would we agree on? People didn't like it last year, and I would agree with it. We had some things that the manager couldn't deliver on housing, more year-round residents. How can we deliver on that? We had one here, first-time home buyers. If we had money, it would be great. But if there was something we could all agree on, then I could see making it a goal. But we can't make it a goal if we don't agree. And Mandy, when I, when you say there's some highs on here, but there are people that would delete the whole thing. We have disagreement on the council about these specific items. So I think it was appropriate to say for now, these should be tabled. We might want one of, in one of our March meetings or end of February meetings, schedule a two-hour meeting on what we think is doable that we might agree on. But this is not the way to do it, writing a quick goal with a few words on it. So I would stand with delete this list of where we just didn't have consensus because deletes are strong no's. They're not just reword a little bit because everyone had the ability to reword.
Okay. Counselor Ryan, I'm going to call on others before I come back to you. Counselor DeAngelis.
Yes, I will not support keep deleting these all. What I would like to propose is a change in language that might make it this proposed, these proposed changes be, oh heavens, I'm really tired.
Let's go with the motion on the floor.
What I'd like to do is take out, propose, keep proposed revisions to the zoning bylaws that would reduce the cost of developing, permitting, and building affordable and attainable housing in parcels in Amherst. And I say that because one of the crucial things at the housing forum that just happened was Laura Baker's. Amherst has the worst and most expensive in terms of costs, which include time and everything, a process of doing all of the permitting and everything else. We could become a, we could have forty R overlays, and that would affect affordable housing, and we can have attainable housing.
Okay, we have to deal with the motion that's on the floor before we amend something that's on the list to be deleted. So please hang on to that language, we'll come back.
Thank you.
Counselor Grissimer.
There is actually one other housing item. It's in the already in process. It's the ADU bylaw, just to make a point. In addition to that, what's missing from here is University Drive overlay and all of the other housing projects we've already invested in, and they're in the process. So I just want to not suggest that we don't have a commitment to housing. That doesn't mean I wouldn't put one of these back in. I just want to make sure that we understand there's a lot of housing stuff going on in Amherst. Thank you.
Counselor Rooney.
She beat me to it, but there were several other ones. One was the establishment of the year-round shelter and working with UMass to identify UMass, Amherst, and Hampshire to develop economic development and housing creation opportunities. So I think we have, we have expressed our interest in housing.
Counselor Taub.
I was also going to mention the ADU bylaw, which means accessory dwelling units can be built by right, no permitting process, minimal permitting process required on every lot in town. And I agree with Counselor Shane that if we, I think these, you know, particularly housing and some of the other items require an in-depth conversation that we're not going to have, I don't think, at this hour. And it's, so I would, I would be pleased to have another retreat on some of these items. But I do think that, as Pam said, that, and Lynn, that housing is certainly included among the goals.
Counselor Steinberg.
I think that my concern throughout this process has been that we have too many goals we were considering for the town manager and his staff to make this a realistic document. And what we've been doing is working very hard and very effectively as a group to pare down the list to at least make it so that it has a semblance of reality to what might actually be accomplished. I hesitate at this point to get into the lengthy discussion of these items and just by feeling bad that we didn't do something to suddenly balloon the list back up to a point where it's clearly become being questionable as to whether it's workable.
Counselor Ryan.
So again, I think that if you look at the numbers, and we have the numbers here for these five items, on these issues, we are a deeply divided body, and we're not going to resolve this tonight. And the fact that we delete them does not mean we don't care about housing, we don't care about some of the other issues. But we have a lot of work to do as a council. I'd also point out that in Paul's comments, he also tells us that the planning department, in addition, will first be working on best and ADU change requirements and then zoning bylaws that will address housing and economic development. So I look forward to what the new planning director and the planning department brings to us in the coming year related to housing. So I would urge you to support the motion. And for those who care deeply, as I do, about some of these issues, resolve to work hard in the coming year with the planning department, especially with housing, and with our colleagues to see if we can find common ground.
Counselor Ette.
This is a procedural question, but are we going to be voting for the goals en masse? Or will we end up voting for them individually?
So the goal for the evening is to come away with a list of the town manager's action items that I'll put back into the format that GOL had with the goal areas, and then the council could vote on that as the town manager goals on Monday.
So disagreement doesn't equal don't do. I have a strong resistance to deleting these en masse without discussion of each one, given the spread of priority. I will also remind this council that this is, and this sounds unfuzzy and not fun, but we are not seeking consensus. We are seeking majority. The democracy does not equal consensus. Secondly, to some of the points, so I would like to vote each of these individually and discuss them each individually. Second, asking the town manager to propose something gives us something to discuss as a council. Otherwise, we're stuck in this catch-22 where a counselor might bring it forward, but then we get stuck in, well, it hasn't been, you know, vetted fully through town staff, and so we get stuck in our own mess again. If we want to do the work, we need something to discuss. Proposing revisions is not passing revisions. We are the ones who would pass the revisions. Asking the town manager and his staff to propose revisions gives us something to have those working sessions on, gives us something to, gives us actually something to debate and discuss instead of ideas that we aren't talking, where we aren't talking concrete details. I think all of these things, yes, that might be adding too much. But when we go through and vote each one, we can actually decide if we're redistributing some cookies, where would we put them? For those who tuned into this meeting and not the last meeting, the cookies thing is relevant to a prior conversation. But just a reminder, we're not trying, consensus is great. Consensus is wonderful, wonderful thing. I don't think we've had consensus on more than half of these votes. So we should be voting on each of these individually.
Counselor Shane, I don't think you've spoken on this one.
I was just saying, there is a motion on the floor. It was second, could we vote on the motion, which was the motion to delete all of them?
Are you calling the question?
I'll call the question.
I have a point of order.
Yep.
I was going to make a motion to divide. Is that in order at any time? Or is it lost because of the?
Or is it lost because of the question being called?
It's lost.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Shane made a motion to end debate. We're going to go to a vote. I don't remember where we are. So we're going to start with Counselor Hanke. No. Hegner?
Aye.
Vote to end debate. Lord?
Aye.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan? Shane?
Yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
DeAngelis?
No.
Devlin Gothier?
No.
Ate?
Yes.
Griesmer?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes three, six, ten to three. So we're going to the vote to delete everything that's in red, this page. Counselor Lord?
Nay.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
DeAngelis?
No.
Devlin Gothier?
No.
Ate?
No.
Griesmer?
Aye.
Hanke?
No.
Hegner?
Aye.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven. The motion passes seven, six.
Yes, it passed, seven, six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Hanke, please go ahead.
I move to add an action item of proposed revisions to zoning bylaws and regulations that shorten the time and lower the cost of permitting new housing construction.
Second? Let me find a place for this. Okay, I'm just going to put it here. I'm sorry, I have to ask you to repeat that.
I moved to add an action item of proposed revisions to zoning bylaws and regulations that shortened the time and lower the costs of permitting new housing construction.
Did I get that? Is that accurate? Okay. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Thank you.
Point of order?
Yeah?
I did not think that this was the evening to be adding new items. And I understand this is not really a new one. It's pulled from something that just got defeated. Are we in a position to be doing this?
There's not a rule that said we couldn't. There's not a rule that said a counselor couldn't. So someone, you know, you disagree, you can raise an objection, and there can be a vote if the motion's out of order. I'm informally chairing this. So I would ask Lynn to weigh in if a motion is out of order.
I do not believe this is out of order.
Okay. Counselor Hanke, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yes. There was deep division on what type of housing action item should be included in the manager goals. People have pointed to the ADU item that is measure that is down below. Well, that's required by state law, mainly because if we do nothing, we can't enforce what we have in our bylaws because the state overridden what we have in our bylaws. That's not us doing anything. That's the state forcing us to do something. This attempt, I believe it's closely worded from what Counselor DeAngelis talked about a couple minutes ago, is an attempt to find a way forward on more specific zoning or housing action items for the manager. Last year, when we were talking about goals and we had our retreat and everything that went on, and then there was an evening of discussing housing and some of the various goals. I don't know how you phrased it, Lynn, as president, but there was like an evening where we discussed various goals. Housing came up. There were conflicting ones, and no one had any comment. And what did we see? Not much happen. We need specifics if we want to address the housing crisis. We need something to tell the manager to do. Otherwise, it's just words. It's not action. And there are deep divisions on this council. But as Counselor Devlin Gothier said, division is not delete. We need to talk about it. And what I've seen in the past five years on housing is a desire to avoid talking about our deep divisions related to changes in housing and getting more housing in this town to address the housing crisis. All we seem to do is avoid, avoid, avoid because the discussions are tough. Even tonight, when we're in a retreat, we're being, people are saying, people are saying, "Don't talk, it's not the time to talk." Well, if a retreat isn't the time to talk, when is the time to talk? We need an action item for the manager to address housing. I'm hopeful that this one is one that a majority of this council can get behind.
Counselor Walker?
I'm sorry, I know there's a motion on the table. But Athena, I don't think you explicitly stated whether or not the last motion passed or failed.
I apologize. The motion did pass, seven, six.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Did you have another comment?
Not necessarily. I do support this addition. And I just wanted to know whether or not the last motion passed or...
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shane?
For starters, one of the reasons we don't have a long conversation is we get shouted at when we start to have a long conversation. So I do think we need one. But I really object to a process where we just voted to delete, and then someone comes back with new wording. Pat tried to reword as well. We could do that for all the lows. I just don't, we need to reach closure on these goals. We've been told, and let me just talk about the permitting costs. It's the length of time, not necessarily other pieces. So some of the regulations are state regulations on climate control. So there's long discussion on whether charging stations need to go in or not. And we adopted something that had charging stations in. That took the duplexes through a longer process, the homeowner, first-time buyer, a longer process than they might otherwise have been. There was a discussion in that group, not because of the regulations, but because of who was going to be priority in the pool. Was it people who lived in Amherst? What was the definition of priority coming out? So I've watched when time stayed longer. So what you heard about some of the big housing things is not the, it was the delay in getting to construction. Talk about the school. The delay in getting to construction happened in the bidding process. I really don't think now is the time to produce a global one. But I do think we have, we ran into health inspectors up with a bunch of businesses, where the health inspectors' small items were adding to costs unnecessarily. And the town manager, actually, the building inspector acted on it to turn them back. So I think there are some things that we do inspections that drive up the cost of doing business and of building. So I do object. It's what Pam said. Can we just come back and reword and start, keep adding this? This, we're not having a full discussion of what we think is going wrong. The last thing I want to say is everywhere in the country, all around us, all of the surrounding towns, the construction costs, the steel costs. We saw Barry Roberts reduce what he planned on doing because the price of steel went up. That's where the costs are coming from. Those are huge costs when one unit is now $500,000, $600,000 for good designs in the smaller projects. The super-big ones can bring down the cost of each unit. So I think we're fooling ourselves that we have some magic that will get the cost of new housing. So I'm hoping we can reuse and do some other. I just think we're living in a different kind of world unless we're talking about building on every square inch of unbuildable, of unbuildable land. So I just don't understand a process that we all said delete, and now we're coming back with a new version. I don't understand that.
Counselor Ryan?
I wanted to also quote Laura Baker from the housing seminar the other last week or so. And she did say that Amherst permitting process is no worse than other communities. And so I don't think we are, I'm not, I can't support that aspect of it.
Counselor Taub?
Yes, I certainly support, you know, having, having, being able to build more two to six or any units for our workforce and our year-round population. But I do not believe, it is not our permitting process that is keeping housing from being built. Amherst has added thousands of units, you know, hundreds and thousands of bedrooms in the past 10 or more years with our current permitting process. But market forces are such that all of those permits, all, just about all privately financed building in Amherst is housing for students because the owners can charge by the bedroom for students who share the rent. And it's priced so high that our year-round, non-student population simply can't afford it. So we have added a lot of housing. It's just not for the people that really, that need the housing at a price they can afford. And to me, to weaken the permitting process is, you know, affordable housing under the guise of deregulation. And I, District Four has the two general residence precincts in town. And we have, we are already zoned for multifamily housing. We have apartments, we have townhouses, we have duplexes, triplexes. And part of the permitting process is that abutters are notified. And that doesn't keep, that doesn't keep housing from being built. But any permitting that would allow more by right so that the residents in the neighborhood don't have any input or even an opportunity to speak. I mean, the residents on Stanley Street, you know, they, you know, had concerns about the pickleball courts, about the DPW building. There, I mean, if you live in a neighborhood where you never get an abutters notice because there is no building there, it is easy to say you want to deregulate and weaken the permitting process. But that is not what is keeping housing from being built for the people who need it is because they have to go before the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I can't support the part of this that is looking to weaken permitting. That is not responsible. That is not why we don't have the housing for our year-round population at a price they can afford.
Okay. Counselor DeAngelis?
Yes, I will use my mic. This overlay district, the University Drive overlay district, rose up from staff. Other revisions to zoning have risen up from the Planning Board or the Planning Department. If we look at our master plan, there is all kinds of housing that we could build in Amherst, but we ignore the master plan. We're not talking about weakening permitting. We're talking about making it a smoother process. And if you talk to Laura Baker and do a full quote, and I don't have it with me, you would understand that that's very limited, what you're sharing. We need to have housing and revisions to zoning in our goals for the town manager because they become the goals for the Planning Department and the Planning Board. And to pretend, pretend that you support housing as long as it's not where I don't want it to be is ridiculous. The other thing is, no one has ever said anything about eliminating abutters notices. Why would, well, maybe you have. I don't think you ever said that.
Your zoning revisions were all about weakening the permitting process.
It had nothing to do with not notifying abutters.
Or by right.
Point of order, please stop interrupting.
Pardon me?
I was calling a point of order to ask people to please stop interrupting.
I still didn't hear...
Pat, you have the floor. Please go on.
It's, so putting out things that aren't there to make sure that your position gets cemented into the hearts of people in Amherst makes me sad. There's never, ever, ever been talk about not notifying abutters. And there's never been any talk about eliminating their positions or not hearing from other people. The only, the only reason 132 North Hampton Road went, made it was because the town organized and pushed past the people in District Three and District Four who were opposing that, oh, no, that's true. And that's, you can quote John Hornick so on that. But, you know, I'm angry because I've been fighting for housing in this town for five, for five years, six years. And we have nothing going. Yes, we have some developments. But you fight everything that comes up. It's sad.
Counselor Ryan?
This is clearly not the best time to do this, but I guess there, I would appreciate not being interrupted. Thank you. But we are doing it. You are correct. If Counselor Hanke could just help me, I've been plying through this paper that has writing all over it now. This particular wording is somewhere in our document, and I just can't find it? Or are you just created it?
May I?
This is new. In other words, what we're seeing this evening is something new to us, this wording, this language. Is that correct?
May I?
Can you?
It is in the Excel spreadsheet under the No Consensus tab, under column B, the fourth row, sixth row, where one commenter, in response to the survey...
So there's no consensus, thank you.
...indicated potential additional language.
Thank you. That's important to me because, actually, it's important to us. I think it's pretty low-hanging fruit, actually. And so actually, I'm going to vote for it if we ever get to that point this evening. I agree that housing is something that is contentious in this body. And it's, but this is basically saying something fairly clear and direct and asking to get input from the Planning Department, which is also going to be looking at other aspects of housing. I like the specificity. I appreciate being reminded that it's already in the document. It's not something that we've not seen before. So I'm going to actually vote to support it.
Counselor Taub?
Yeah, I just, I do take umbrage. I do not block housing. Again, I represent a district that has, we are zoned for housing on the smallest lots. We are zoned for multifamily housing. We are the most diverse district in housing stock in Amherst. So I do not live on a quiet, dead-end street where, you know, nobody is actually looking to build. So I, and I chose to live where I live because I wanted to live, you know, near town in a neighborhood where the houses were, you know, close together, where there was density. But what the, the housing, you know, proposed zoning amendments that you and Counselor Hanke sponsored last year, and when Counselor Hanke presented them to the Planning Board and the council and the CRC, she very much talked about having as much, and I, we've spoken about this, to see as much by right to take what in my neighborhood we go because we have a lot of multifamily development that's always permitted and built, that the residents support. But they like to have the opportunity... But they like to have the opportunity to, when it goes before the zoning board of appeal, to ask if, you know, the driveways might be able to be on a different street. These projects always built with the support of the community. And to, and so I take seriously that when affordable housing, it, well, when is disguised as, or I feel that is much, that the goal is as much to have by right and deregulation as it is to build housing. So my, what I am concerned with here is the emphasis weakening the permitting process. It doesn't just say, we would like to support and have zoning revisions so we can have multifamily units all over town, not just in the general residence districts. But it's saying that we want the permitting, we want to weaken the permitting process. That's, that's how I read this. And to, to, to not welcome the input, the neighborhoods where this housing would be developed.
Just gonna give us 30 seconds. I see two councillors' hands up, and it's councillors that we've heard from before. Are there comments that you feel are really important that you make before this comes to a vote? Counselor DeAngelis, I'm sorry, Councilor Hanke?
A lot of that comment was indirectly focused on me, even though it was not naming me. When you talk about dead end streets and everything. We do get abutters notices. In fact, I had one within the last year because there was a plan in front of the ZBA. And I showed up and I spoke in favor of it and urged them to allow the plan. I was the only person who showed up in speaking in favor, my husband and myself. I actually kind of made two comments because he was taking kids during the hearing time. Everyone else spoke against the plan. Not coming outright in saying it, one asked a question about completely unrelated property that wasn't even up for hearing. Another one asked about construction timing and stuff like that. Completely unrelated to the actual special permit that was on issue. It is known that time is money and time adds costs. And this action item proposal is seeking to shorten the time that it takes to get to building from the time someone proposes to build. Seeking to lower a cost. If you don't lower costs, you don't have affordable or attainable housing. I'm also tired of people seeming to imply that if you don't live in downtown, you don't have the same stake in our town and our housing as if you do live in downtown. Every single resident of this town cares about the entire town. Every single resident cares about the entire town and ensuring that our entire town works for everyone, not just a small minority of folks. That includes trying to ensure that those that cannot afford to live in our town now can do so because we've built housing that they can afford to live in. Having a housing action item that tries to reduce the costs of building does not mean we're saying no to input. Although the studies are out there that show the more input, the more times you offer input by abutters and other residents in town, the higher the costs of the development. Does not say it would weaken a permitting opportunity because frankly, that just assumes that our planning board, when dealing with site plan review, has a weaker review than our ZBA when dealing with special permit. Doesn't necessarily mean. Actually, I just dispute that concept completely, that our planning board is a weaker regulatory body than our ZBA. Our planning board does a fantastic job when they're looking at site plan reviews. They look at different things than the ZBA. It doesn't mean it's weaker. We need housing goals that are specific or more specific than they've been the last five years and six years of this council. Because the, what we've had isn't producing changes that we as a council have adopted goals, things in our rules of procedure and just our own statements that say we want more housing. But when we keep them vague, we don't get it. We need specificity.
Councilor Taub?
One of the goals that I guess the first year I was on the council that I said was, and the response was that it was really too vague, was what could we do to build housing and adopt policies that would help to sustain and expand our year round population? So if we asked, if, if this item was here and we were, you know, said we wanted it to be a goal to how could we build more two to six family units? I would be very supportive of that if we specified that it would be geared to our non-student households. Because otherwise, again, if just left to market forces alone, what I have seen is all the two to six unit housing that will be built will be priced for students. Because that's where, how developers and LLCs and investors make the most money. So if we could have asked the staff to develop policies that would make it so we could build more of this kind, more housing, two to six units, as has been specified here, for our year round population, I could support that with our current permitting system as well.
Councilor Ryan?
Call a question?
I don't see any other hands up, so I think we can move to a vote without a vote on ending debate, if that's okay?
It's fine.
Okay. So the, the vote right now is adding this language that's shown in red, this last box. Counselor Rooney?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
No.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Taub?
No.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor DeAngelis?
Aye.
Devlin Gotheaer?
Aye.
Ette?
Yes.
Griesmer?
Aye.
Hanke?
Aye.
Pugner?
Yes.
Lord?
Aye.
It's 10 to three, the motion passes. Anna has a, I'm sorry, Counselor Devlin Gotheaer, go ahead.
It's, it's okay, first names are fine. I am incredibly disappointed in this council's decision to bypass the opportunity to give each of these action items due process. Going down the list, if we consider low and delete nos and medium and high priorities, yeses, we would have had votes on this list of seven, six, five, in favor, five, eight, five, eight, seven, six, seven, six. If, like me, people ran out of cookies and put low on things that were good, but maybe not critical, and we consider low and medium and high as yes, it would have been 12, one, 10, three, 10, three, 13, zero, 12, one. I'm not saying that that is a perfect example of how things shake out and what we would have voted, but I'm noting how people ranked these. I'm a little unclear on how the first item, fourth item and fifth item were not put into the leans medium list. And I'm disappointed that they were not given the courtesy of discussion. In an effort, I believe, to be efficient, this council has instead launched itself into a very fun quagmire. We have been working on our review of public safety protocols since a vote this council took in 2022. And we just deleted it from the goals this year. This is something that a majority of this council, seven people, said was a high or medium priority for them. I was going to propose amendments to it by replacing the action items with Paul's suggestions. And now I will make those as motions as full additions because of the rash and cowardly decisions of this council in voting these as a slate. I'm still shocked by that proposal and vote. And I move to add in the following action items. You can just copy and paste it from Paul's list if you'd like. Organize a review of public safety protocols for responding to and handling public safety calls involving all residents, including minors, in order to recommend changes to those protocols if appropriate. And work with the Amherst Police Department to review and update, if appropriate, selected policies of the APD. This review shall be including, but not limited to, use of force policy, consent searches and low level and pretextual stops.
I second that.
Question on this motion, Counselor Taub?
I guess I have a point of order.
Yep.
I did not raise this issue with the previous motion because the language was already in the document. And now it seems like we're getting into very dangerous territory where councillors are rewording things that have already been voted on and asking for yet another vote. We voted to delete those five items. And I have just a question of someone to judge whether this motion is in order if you simply take the language and tweak it and then have another vote. Can somebody clarify whether this is in order? Because we can spend all night taking each one of these items and tweaking the language and forcing votes after we just voted to delete them. So there seems to be a problem here, at least to me. Can someone help me see that it's not a problem?
I can certainly be overruled, but I don't believe that because we voted this as a group, it does not allow an individual councillor to bring back one of those individual items. Now, if the council disagrees with me, you can vote to disagree with me.
I would like to put that to a vote of the council.
Is a motion to overrule the ruling of the chair?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I speak to it?
Sure.
It just seems to be basically gaming the system at this point. Because people didn't get what they wanted. Now they're going to revise the language. Some of the things, anyway, I just, it doesn't seem appropriate. And so I hope that my colleagues will vote to overrule the president on this particular matter. Just taking something that we'd already voted to delete and rearranging the language, bringing in some new things, seems to be counter to the spirit of what we decided.
Are there any other comments on the motion to overrule? There are hands up. If you're not making a comment on this motion, please take it down. Counselor Rooney?
Thank you. I, I appreciate that comment. I'll echo the same thing. I was going to say there, there were a number of items that I, for instance, had high on that ended up in the, you know, in another category because there weren't enough people that thought like me on it. But I am not offering to resurrect them from the depths of, you know, the no vote. In fact, we are trying to list.
Yep.
You know.
Counselor Taub?
But didn't we just, I mean, I think a precedent was set because we just revoted an item. So I don't think it's fair now to say when the next, you know, someone, another councillor wants to do the same thing, that, that that's not allowed. We've already set the precedent. And I don't want to beat a dead horse, but maybe I'll wait until the council meeting on Monday. Because what we just, as long as we're changing language, I would just want to add to the vote we just had. If we could, you know, ask the staff when they're proposing zoning changes so we can build more to two to six family units, which I totally support, that it be with an eye towards the intended for our year round population. So that we are, in fact, providing housing for the people that we are intended for.
We're talking about the, the motion to overrule the chair's ruling. Did you have any other comments on that?
But I, I mean, I'm not looking to go through each item now either, but I think the precedent's been set.
Okay. Counselor Devlin Gotheaer?
I would argue by not taking separate votes to vote things as a slate and then vote them down as a slate, the decision or the motion to deny the opportunity to have discussion on these items was already gaming the system.
Counselor Ette?
Likewise, I think we swerved once we, at some point, decided to vote en masse for some of these goals.
Okay. Counselor Shane?
I believe George made a motion to overrule the town president. I'd like to be able to vote on that. We have been given this list. And what I'm also hearing, the subcommittee that gave us a very long list is now trying to put items on with new rewording. We had opportunities to reword over the last weekend. And this is, we need to be more efficient as the town council. We just need to be more efficient. So I would like to vote on the motion to overrule the president's ruling on this.
Counselor Walker?
Yeah, I just want to add that I, I think we did just a very similar, if not the same thing with Mandy Jo's motion just a moment ago. So I'm, I'm just a little bit confused about the disagreement here.
So the motion on the floor is to overrule the chair's ruling that this motion to add is in order. So a vote yes would overrule the chair's ruling that this motion is in order. It would remove the motion from the floor. Are there any questions about what you're voting? Go ahead.
Would it remove what we just voted on?
No, there was no, there was no challenge to that. Are there any other questions about the, the motion that you're voting right now?
Yes, I'm sorry, Athena. Can you please repeat which yes is to overrule the president's ruling?
The, there was a point of order that the motion that Counselor Devlin Gotheaer made was out of order. President Griesmer said that it's not out of order. And there was a challenge to that ruling. So now you're voting to overturn the ruling that it's not out of order.
Yes, no, I understand that, but I'm trying to figure out, so a yes does what? Like, what is the difference between yes and no then?
A yes overrules the president's ruling that this is not out of order and it removes this from the floor. It removes Anna's motion from the floor, a yes vote.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions or comments? Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Taub?
No.
Counselor Walker?
No.
Counselor DeAngelis?
No.
Counselor Devlin Gotheaer?
No.
Counselor Ette?
No.
Councilor Griesmer?
No.
Councilor Hanke?
No.
Councilor Hegner?
No.
Councilor Lord?
No.
Councilor Rooney?
Yes.
That motion fails four to nine. The motion on the floor is to add this as an action item. Is there discussion? Councilor Griesmer?
I'd like to ask the town manager, how much of this has been going on? Where do we stand with this? This is something that has been out there for about two years.
Review of public safety protocols.
So I know the police department is part of, with the conclusion of their accreditation process, have reviewed all their policies. I don't have this specific update for you on these specific policies on the use of force, consent searches, or low-level pretextual stops.
Is there other discussion? Okay. Seeing none?
I actually do have one of them.
Oh, yeah, please go ahead.
It's, it doesn't need to be part of this motion, but I would like to encourage the town manager to bring forth some kind of report that tells us what, if any, changes have been made. Thank you.
No further discussion. We are... Uh, Councilor Shane, how do you vote? Councilor Shane? To add this.
We're voting, are we voting all those paragraphs back in or the original wording?
This here.
What?
It's not the original wording. It's just what Athena has highlighted.
But all that wording was in the explanation of it in the box.
It was in Paul's comment on the...
Then I'm voting no.
Vote from 2022.
I'm voting no.
Okay. Steinberg?
No.
Taub?
Uh, yes.
Walker?
Yes.
De Angelis?
Aye.
Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Ette?
No.
Griesmer?
Aye.
Hanke?
Aye.
Hegner?
Aye.
Lord?
Aye.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan? That passes nine to four.
Point of order?
Yes.
Why does some things end up in the high bucket and some things end up in the medium or low? Medium bucket? Like, you just put that, you just put that one plopped into medium?
Yeah.
The other one was plopped into high?
It was totally arbitrary. I just needed a place to add a box, and I found a place to add a box. When this comes back to the council on Monday, I'll reorganize them back into the format that GOL had, so they're in their goal areas. There's no more ranking priorities. There's no subterfuge. Is there any other discussion?
I guess I have a question about the last page.
Okay.
That has measure and status because we haven't talked about that part at all. So I guess one of my questions is, what does the first three look like in an action item? Are they literally just going to say waste taller bylaw or solar bylaw or residential rental? Since they were pulled out, it, and a lot of language was lost, what, what's the intended language for those, those three and the master plan? Because the master plan actually had some language that was also removed when it went into this chart.
I'll put the, the language for the master plan back. This would be continue to support development, continue to support development, and continue implementation. I can put that in.
Wouldn't it just go back to the language that we had in the previous?
It was part of a much longer action item. Councilor Ryan?
Please use your mic.
What reads, address critical infrastructure needs for water and sewer, et cetera, et cetera? That's, it gets added to the wastewater? Is that correct? Or where does that show up?
Yes.
As an asterisk?
It was added to the wastewater. It was separated from that wastewater, so it would go added, added back in.
Added back in?
Yep. Councilor Ryan, did you have any other comments?
No, do not.
Councilor Taub?
How many goals do we have? Do we?
Thirty-five? Thirty-five?
Did we have a goal for the goal?
No, sorry. Can I respond to that from GOL's discussions?
Um, GOL, sure.
So we did not set a set number because every goal is a different size. And so to set an... No, honestly, because we can look at how many we set last year. We could look at that, but it's really not comparable because they're written differently. These are broken out more, so we couldn't expect them, expect there to be more because in the past we had numbers, but then like five action items in each number. So there isn't a target number. Maybe in the future we can get to one, but given the different sizes and given that these all impact different departments in different ways, like different weights, we can't necessarily... I think maybe this is my opinion, and GOL didn't vote on this statement, but I don't think that we can fairly set a, responsibly set a number to target.
Maybe this is what we're going to do.
Councilor Taub, there were other hands up, so let me... Okay.
Are we going to try and narrow them down tonight or is that for Monday?
We've gone through all of them. We're on this page unless there are motions to remove other ones, then we're getting to the end here. Councilor Hanke?
So I move to delete the address critical infrastructure needs for water and sewer to comply with state and federal laws.
Is there a second?
I will second. I want to hear the arguments.
Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, so way back four hours ago, we added a assess the current conditions of the wastewater treatment plan and present a plan that will address these issues, including a funding plan for improvements and repairs. The language I just moved to delete was originally listed as an alternative
Right.
to that language. I don't quite understand why it was listed as required by law other than it has this thing at the end that says to comply with state and federal laws. But I, I feel like it's not needed. And given what we adopted or what we've kept in from earlier in this meeting, that what we kept in way up in the high priority is more specific to what we are aiming for than this one.
Yes.
There's, is there a discussion on this? Councilor Ette, is your comment about this one?
Not at all.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Councilor Shane?
I just didn't hear, when I count them up, I get 24, so I just didn't hear what you said you get as a number.
I got 34, but I was counting correctly.
Pat heard you say 35, so there's a big difference between 24 and...
Count together.
I mean, I could imagine I miscounted, maybe it's 25, but I only get 24. I numbered.
Twenty-five. Twenty-six, twenty-seven. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five. I, I got 35.
What?
I got 35.
Yeah, I put a number next to each one, and I don't get anywhere near that, so I'm just not sure.
Yeah, including these ones.
So.
Oh, you, you mean this, this last page?
They all get added in.
Yeah, those are, those are still goals.
Last page of...
Measures.
They get added in.
They're all, they were all separate goals on the document, so they would become separate.
We're still pretty far apart, but that's okay. I'm, I just numbered them as we went along, like we took DPW and collapsed it into one, so I made it only one. But anyway, we'll see the cleaned up sheet when we see it.
Monday night.
I mean, I have my marked up one, so.
I will show you clean and marked up and cleaned up some more. Uh, did you have any comments on?
Mandy's motion.
On Mandy's motion? Which is? To delete this.
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Shane, did you have any other comments on this? No. Councilor Hegner?
The, the earlier action item referred to the wastewater plant specifically. This includes the water systems, which I think we have state laws now that will affect the water systems, and I think we should keep this because water systems are not included in wastewater treatment.
Councilor Ette?
Not on this.
Uh, Councilor Devlin-Gothier?
I would like to once again remind this council that the number of goals is arbitrary. We need to look at the amount of work required by the goals. Some goals require a lot more than others, so I encourage people to detach from the idea of a specific number. And, for example, combining two action items into one may drop the number, but doesn't change the amount of work whatsoever. So on this topic, my question is, if it has to get done anyway, if Paul will spend time doing it anyway, why would we not put it in the goals and give him credit for doing it when we do his evaluation? So this, you know, this goals document is, there's no reason to cut out things, in my mind, that are going to take time and effort, and I'm not trying to open a can of worms. I'm just talking about this one right now. In my mind, it doesn't make sense to remove something that Paul and his staff will have to spend time on, and then we don't even get to credit them for it during his evaluation if they're going to do it anyway. I'd also like to note, last year's goals, there were 67. So if you are attached to numbers...
Seventy-eight.
I just counted in my tally. Well, it's impossible because they're all broken into paragraphs and not number lines, but somewhere between 67 and 78 goals. So if we're talking numbers, we've done a significant amount of cutting, and I'm really proud of us for that. But again, please detach the idea of a specific number in your brain.
Councilor Hanke?
So I appreciate the comments. However, one of the things we did was delete a lot of the already required by law. Hold on. Wait, 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 wait. We already deleted a lot of that because it needs to be done, and we included a lot of that as assumed to be done within the, if you remember our original chart, we had a goal area, we had an objective, and then we have action items. And a lot of those already required by laws are covered within the objectives, and this one would be covered within the objective of infrastructure management, in a sense. And my understanding of action items was things that we really want to see that aren't necessarily required by law. They're required, there, there are goals beyond the normal day-to-day stuff because that's under the objective. So I, I would say if the sole reason we're keeping it in is because it's quote, "required by law," well, we've already deleted a ton, and we'll be back up to eight, or we could be back up to 80, and we don't want to be back up to 80. So the things easiest to delete are the ones that have to be done because they're required by law, if we're doing them within the normal course of timing.
Councilor Ryan?
So mine is back just to Councilor Hanke's motion, and if it does succeed, what the language would look like. And it's just late, I guess. Your motion was to delete it, is that correct?
To delete it.
And Bob's point was that that might not actually cover some of the things we wanted to cover. So maybe my question is for Bob, thinking out loud, how this, would you have it as a separate item, as a separate action item? Or would you somehow word it back into the, the wastewater item? Because it isn't that way right now. So I guess I, I'm trying to understand what we're going to do with this thing. If we don't delete it, where does it go?
Well, the wastewater issues are different than
Right.
the systems issues.
So a separate, like, maybe a separate action item then?
Drinking water system is old too and has problems, and we, we may need, there will be regulations and laws that'll change that'll affect drinking water. So I, I think we, we can focus this on drinking water if you want and stormwater if you want, but, you know.
But I think Mandy's argument, what I'm hearing, is that since it's required by law, unless there's a particularly special reason for us to bring it to Paul's attention, we can assume that he and his staff will take care of it. Maybe your argument is that this is something you feel rises to that level of importance and needs to be added as a separate item?
I, I mean, we could go through all of these again to see if we're worried about whether it's required by law or not. I don't think it's worth our doing that at this late hour.
So that's why we wanted to delete it. I agree with deleting it, so.
I'm fine.
I know, that's all right. It's just, yeah. Okay.
Councilor Griesmer?
I think we should just leave this in as we left in all the rest of these. I could have argued that there were some in the earlier things that should have been in this list. This is a minimalist of things that are required. I'm ready to make a motion to adjourn.
Well, that's fine.
There's a motion on the floor. Councilor Hanke?
That hand is before a motion, so I get before a motion to adjourn because I, oh, you did just change it up there. The master plan stuff was not changed, so I wanted to make sure it was getting there. But that's not part of the motion that's on the floor, so I need my hand up.
What was in the original GOL?
Could you make that a bit bigger, please? Actually, it's on my screen. I'm sorry, I can look at it. Thank you. Yeah, that's true. I carry it. Thank you, thank you.
Did you have a comment? Councilor Hanke?
I mean, not much more than I already said. I think a lot of these could be deleted. If there's the comment, but he'll spend time, well, he's going to spend a ton of time on the budget, but we didn't even talk about the budget in these goals. I mean, just because there's time there doesn't mean we need to add them into these action items. I think a lot of these measure ones could be deleted, not just the one I proposed.
Okay, it sounds like you're ready to vote. Counsel, so the motion is to delete address critical infrastructure needs. Councilor Shane?
You know, I'm going to abstain because I don't understand why we're having a long discussion about this, so I'm just abstaining.
Councilor Steinberg? Counselor Taub? Yes.
Um, no.
Counselor Walker?
I'm also abstaining.
Uh, Counselor De Angelis?
No.
Counselor Devlin Gauthier?
No.
Counselor Ette?
No.
Counselor Griesmer?
No.
Counselor Hankey?
Yes.
Counselor Hegner?
No.
Counselor Lord?
No.
Counselor Rooney?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
That's two yes. Nine no, two abstain. That motion fails. Counselor Hankey, is your hand up for some, a new?
Yeah. There have been some side conversations going on during this meeting, one of which was just commented that I heard the president say, don't go there. Um, when I talked about potentially making other motions. We spent a lot of time on the high priority ones that everyone was going to keep in. And then we get to these where we need some discussion and all this council does is say, oh, we don't have time, we don't have time, it's late. We shouldn't discuss or don't go there because I want to end this meeting. I think it's a shame and a disservice to the manager that we tried to rush through the more difficult parts of this conversation because it's been a long meeting. I will refrain from making the motions tonight with, in respect to the fact that it's a long meeting. But please know that come Monday, I'm gonna bring up these conversations again because they're important conversations to have. We had a long conversation last week on the Jones Library and whether this is the right goal to even have in there. But I know, given some of the things that have been said in the last half hour, that if I move to amend this or delete this one, all I'm going to get is sighs and frustration because it's already been a long meeting. We're not done. We need to take the time to have these conversations and we should just admit that instead of making comments such as, don't go there from the person who's leading our council.
I'm sorry, it's, that was my fault, Mandy, it was not the president's fault.
Counselor Ette?
On a, on a related note, I was thinking if during the regular council meeting, we could treat whatever comes out of tonight's event as something like the consent agenda. So, excuse me. So that we'll have an opportunity to pull out a few items, whatever anyone wants and have further discussion on those items, just because I think there's something about voting these items en masse, given that we didn't discuss all of those items.
Counselor Rooney?
Yeah, I think what's going through my head is that these last items are ongoing, required by law, and I think the conversation really, I'm, I'm trying to keep the conversation at a ten thousand foot level. Let's just, let's just incorporate these, let's not, let's not wade through these so carefully and you know, at some point you just have to say, I think, these are basically okay, they're required by law, let's just leave them in and move on and not spend a lot more time on it. That's, that was what triggered my conversation over here in the corner.
Counselor Walker?
Um, I'm also just wanting to circle back to Frekka's comments because I think that that's a good point. We did a lot of work tonight. Um, and while there was a lot of discussion, we did come to consensus on some things and so do we have any type of agreement or precedent that those things will continue to be in agreement on Monday or will we have to rehash all of these conversations again at our council meeting? Um, and I think that's an important thing to talk about and I did just want to address Mandy Jo's comments just because this, this retreat was listed to be from six to ten and I do have class at nine AM, so I do want to go to bed, but I do think it's really important for us to hear each other out because we don't agree on all of these things and so I, I think more conversation is required. I don't know if right now is the right time. Um, but I did just want to, you know, appreciate Mandy Jo for her thoughts. I'm, I'm tired and I do want to end this meeting, though.
Counselor Shane?
Okay, in terms of rushing, I'm counting up the hours. I, we spent two hours on climate the first time we did, Lynn convened us again, we spent another two hours, then we spent uh, four or five hours. I spent eight hours in between reading multiple versions, writing comments. This is an enorm, an enormous amount and careful comments on why some things don't rise to the level of council goals, going back down to micromanaging. I think this is by far the most inefficient goal-setting time I've been through and I thought the first year was not a good one. So, so, and we do have a rule, if you can't come back unless there's new information to revisit a vote we already took. We, we did that on a couple more major pieces, so I don't think we should start uh, reneging on that because we must have some other things that we have to get done. That's just my view that it's not a rush and the second time I came in, I didn't understand, Lynn, we weren't about eliminating, we were just supposed to talk about them and understand what they were. I had comments on everything, all written up and we never got to it, so there's gotta be a better way of using our time and if we take a long time writing comments and everyone reads them, that's in effect a kind of discussion that's happening behind the scenes, but I don't think everybody reads all the comments that people have been putting in. So I just object very much to the idea that we were rushed. If we were rushed, it's because we didn't read really carefully before we came and we didn't read four days ago and we didn't read the first time. So I think homework sometimes is painful as well, so I will come back, I don't, I didn't feel rushed. I felt like we were rehashing some things. Thank you.
Lynn, I think I'll hand things back to you and see if there's a motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Yep. Steinberg?
Yes.
Taub?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
De Angelis?
Aye.
Devlin Gauthier?
Aye.
Ette?
Aye.
Griesmer?
Aye.
Hankey?
Aye.
Hegner?
Aye.
Lord?
Aye.
Rooney?
Yes.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shane?
Yes.
We're adjourned at ten thirty-nine.